All right, we're about to start, everyone. Mayor, we got three on the desk. Vice Mayor. Commissioner Chernoff said, "I heard you." Commissioner Smucker. She's definitely here, I can hear her.
I know, somebody moved me.
But he has a better person next to him.
Covering on each side. Okay, okay, everyone's on the desk. Vice Mayor is not here, but I know she's probably, oh, she's coming?
I don't think she knows who said it.
Listen, everything Smucker is better.
It's better with Smucker.
All right, so, the time is, here comes our Vice Mayor. The time is 6:12. Today's meeting is our regular commission meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please do the roll call for our February 18, 2025 meeting? Thank you.
Here.
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 Present.
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 Mayor Michael Joseph.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have quorum.
Next item on the agenda, invocation Reverend Willie Mae Williams from Greater Gibbs Chapel, African-American, African Methodist Episcopal AME Church. Please come on down, thank you.
Either one.
Either one's fine.
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
And before I pray, you know, I was taught that you go and do what you're asked to do. But I have been going through memory lane because I worked at JFK the middle for 10 years. And amazing, I have two students in here, which, you know, I don't, I don't say that loudly because then that makes me look old. But it has been a pleasure, and especially, I was a home economics teacher. And so one has been telling me how much he has been cooking. That voice that you all heard earlier, that was my student. When I taught at JFK, it was junior high, so that means, you know, like 7th grade, and that's, that does make me look old, but praise the Lord, I'm here. And I am at Greater Gibbs Chapel. I've only been there maybe two months now. I heard the invites for Black History, and I'm gonna do the same thing, but all of the churches seem to be having something on that same Sunday. But you're invited, you're invited to Greater Gibbs on Sunday at 3 o'clock for a Black History worship. Let us pray. Thank you, God. Thank you for this opportunity to come together where we have people with one purpose in mind. And if it's not one purpose in mind, it should be one purpose in mind. And that's for the city of North Miami Beach. So now, God, I ask that your Holy Spirit come into this place. I ask that this meeting, go, Father God, and there are no issues that unity and love can't solve. I pray now, God, to the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the same God who saved the people that we read in the Bible called the Israelites. I pray now, God, for this city of North Miami Beach, or God, whatever it is that needs to be fixed within this city, for we live in turbulent times. We've seen things we have never seen before. We see actions and violence and all kinds of stuff, God, in the city that when you created it, you said it was good. So now, come, come and bless your people. Give them ideas, Father God, to stop the violence, to stop the deaths, to stop all of those things that are happening that ought not to be. I pray that you have your way in this meeting. Some folk believe that you don't mix God with politics. But, Lord, they even voted in the Bible. There was a time when they had to come together and choose people to do certain things. And so tonight, we just pray that you be in this meeting, that everything is done decent and in order. And we will praise your holy name because you are a good God, you are an awesome God, and even though all around me may be people from different divisions, from different denominations, even having different beliefs, and some don't even believe. But whatever the situation is, we can still love. We can love, and so I pray now during this February month, during this month of Black History, during this month of love, that you enable us to work together, that you enable us, you demonstrated earlier in another meeting tonight, you demonstrated love where we honored each other. And so, Lord, let that be the theme in this city for the rest of this month and forevermore. This is my prayer. And I have to pray in my faith, which says, "In the name of Jesus, I offer this prayer." Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Next up is number three, Pledge of Allegiance, when we all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, free, democratic, and just as a whole.
Madam Clerk, we are at number four, request for withdrawals, affirmance, and additions to the agenda.
Mayor, per the request of Commissioner Smith, item 11.2, which is Resolution Number 2025-09, that is to be withdrawn. There are two applications for the Civil Service Board that will be added under appointments. The first one is to appoint Louis Harkness to the Civil Service Board, that will be item 13.2. The next is appointing Irene Pellinger to the Civil Service Board, and that will be item 13.3. Per the request of Vice Mayor Sue, a discussion item titled Charter Review Committee will be added under discussion, and that will be item 15.3. Those are the only changes that I have.
Which one was deleted?
11.4.
11.2, Resolution 2025-09.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Can you clarify what withdrawn means, Madam Clerk? Don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Withdrawn, that will be removed from this agenda. We will not be hearing it tonight.
So, there's no time certain on anything, it's just been withdrawn from this agenda?
Until further notice, at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Which item was that, please?
11.2, Resolution 2025-09. Street lining repair.
May I ask, Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor?
It was 11.3.
11.3, oh, okay.
I was about to ask, like, why?
Okay, so it's 11.3.
I stand corrected.
Oh, so 11.2 remains, 11.3, Resolution 2025-18. We're going 10?
11.3, I asked it for two.
Okay, can you just recap real quick, Madam Clerk?
Okay, so, for clarification?
Yes, please.
To be tabled, I asked 11.3 to be tabled.
No, to be tabled didn't have to be a vote, because it's already on the agenda.
Okay, pull it, please.
Withdraw it.
Yes, thank you.
Which item, please?
11.3.
Not 11.2?
No.
Okay.
Um...
Mayor?
I have a Commissioner's floor mark?
Thank you, well, in that case, I'd like to withdraw 11.2.
Okay, so that's tabled. Can I have a request for a motion and a second to prove the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed? One opposed, okay, so it passes. Next item is, whoa, 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 let me go. Presentations, legislative update from our great Senator Chevron D. Jones, is he in, oh, we have someone representing him, please stop. Come, either podium. No, he is not, Chevron, he's not the state senator.
He's a little taller.
All right, um, here's some of the handout. Yes, I'm gonna give you some of my card as well. Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Devon Vill-Frard, thank you for having me. I serve as the District Legislative Aid for District 34, Senator Chevron Jones. On behalf of the Senator, we thank you for allowing me the opportunity to join you today. The Senator wishes he can be here, and he would like me to extend his regards as he is currently in Tallahassee for committee weeks ahead of legislative session, which is beginning soon. Today's updates will serve as an opportunity to learn about the upcoming 2025 legislative session and inform you on how to get involved. Current session goals include many bills that the Senator is bringing forth to the legislature, some of which I will share with you today. The first bill is SB 268, Public Records and Public Officers, which will impact the mayor and the city commission. This bill will create a public records exemption for various public officers, protecting the partial address and telephone numbers of the officer and their spouse, as well as protections for their minor children as it relates to their name, date of birth, telephone number, and name of their school or daycare. This bill is not meant to hinder the transparency of Florida sunshine laws, but instead, it aims to bring the protections meant to protect our elected officials, who over the years have increasingly been subject to threats and harms, as well as to ensure we are protecting our democracy, excuse me, our democratic system, and creating a safe space for individuals who are thinking of running for office. Senate Bill 268 passed in the first of three committees this afternoon, and we are looking forward to carrying this bill across the finish line this session. Another bill that our office has filed is Senate Bill 204, Educator Certificate, excuse me, Educator Certifications and Training, which was filed last year but wasn't able to get across the finish line. This bill will require active shooter and mass casualty training as part of education certification, whether that be the traditional route or the alternate route, and will also include five-year recertification. Senate Bill 204 is not meant for our teachers to become first responders, however, it is intended to equip our teachers with the tools and resources necessary to keep themselves and our students safe in the event of a horrific tragedy that we have become all too familiar with. Among other legislation, our Senator will champion, heading into upcoming session, is Senate Bill 236, the Community Violence Task Force. This bill will create a task force within the Department of Law Enforcement to review system failures and the causes of high crime rates and violence in urban core neighborhoods and communities. This task force will develop recommendations for solutions, programs, services, and strategies for improving inter-agency communication between local and state governmental agencies to help facilitate the reduction of 58% of crime and violence in urban core neighborhoods and communities. The last item I want to discuss as it pertains to legislation is an array of consumer protection bills which aim to keep money in Floridians' pockets. These bills have not yet been filed, but I want to make sure you all had an opportunity to hear more about them. First is the cancellation of health club contracts. This bill enhances consumer rights with health studios, excuse me, yes, health studios, otherwise known as gems, contracts by providing cancellation rights, guaranteeing refunds, ensuring multiple cancellation methods, and providing online cancellation for online contracts. This bill provides greater flexibility and protection for consumers entering health studio contracts. It ensures the consumers have a cooling off period to reconsider their decisions and are not bound by contracts they no longer want. We're also looking to champion the elimination of hidden fees. This bill targets deceptive advertising practices that mislead consumers. It prohibits businesses from engaging in misrepresenting prices, misrepresenting goods and services, misrepresenting benefits, and misrepresenting authority. This bill strengthens consumer protection by clearly defining deceptive advertising practices and providing a legal framework for enforcement. It aims to create a fairer marketplace where consumers can make informed decisions based on accurate information. As far as appropriations, Governor Ron DeSantis recently published his proposed 2025-2026 budget titled Focus on Fiscal Responsibility. The governor's focus on fiscal responsibility budget for fiscal year 2025 and 2026 totals $115.6 billion, more than $3 billion lower than the current year budget. Of the total $115.6 billion, the general revenue portion is $50.2 billion, a $383.4 million increase over the current fiscal year 2024-2025 general revenue budget. For North Bay Village, sorry, yes, for North Bay Village, last year we were also successfully able to negotiate over $10 million for 22 appropriations projects across the district. Unfortunately, the governor vetoed 13 of 22 projects, including North Bay Village Island, wastewater pump station, Phase 3, and the North Bay Village Harbor Island roadway improvements, both of which were funded for $425,000. For North Miami Beach, last year, we were able to successfully negotiate over $10 million, excuse me, same thing, my bad.
$10 million, okay, we'll take it.
Yes, hopefully, we can give that if we can. But yes, one of the projects was the generator replacement for water treatment facility, which costed $125,000. So for this year, our office is sponsoring 41 appropriations, amounting to over $25 million, and I'm still reviewing quite a few. We look forward to working alongside our colleagues in the legislature to get funding for programs that address the needs of our community, and as always, we are available to assist your community and your constituents. Please do not hesitate to reach out to our office if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, or requests for assistance. I'm here to serve and make sure that we are working collaboratively to build a stronger, healthier, and more prosperous community for us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like you to take back to the Senator that please reconsider Senate Bill 202 against our Water Department.
To that point, Commissioner, we're supposed to have a meeting coming up on the 27th to discuss that particular issue, and, you know, some of the commissioners that were there during our legislative briefing when we were up in Tallahassee, we know how vehemently our standpoint on that particular legislation, we made it very clear to the Senator, and that resolve has not dampened one iota, so looking forward to that discussion.
Thank you.
All right, next item, since it will be 5.4. FI's been pushed over, 5.4, which is our first quarterly financial report, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the first quarter of the City of North Miami Beach financial report. I will start by saying that it's been three months now on the job as the city's Chief Financial Officer. One of the things I want to have as a takeaway today is present you the financial information, but also get feedback from the Commissioners on what this report really presents and what this report doesn't really present to you. I kept it the same format on purpose, because I'm hoping that the next time we do the second quarter, we can present to you the information that's not currently on the information on today. Basically, what the report shows is we are comparing actuals to the budget. The city commission adopted a budget starting October 1st. The actuals are through December 31st, 2024. Of course, two things are happening during this period, one fiscal year is closing, the prior year, and then we have a new fiscal year that is taking place. So basically, the first quarter always doesn't show some level of expenditures as other reports show throughout the year. So, the city achieved as of December 31st, 2024, a net favorability, meaning that the city collected revenues at a pace higher than what we spend the money, and this is across all the funds. The next slide will show the line items by fund, so about the total across all the funds, about $20 million, which means that most of the expenditures are not hitting yet the first quarter for the city's general fund, as well as the water fund and other fund as well. As you can see in this chart, you will see there is the adopted budget, and then we also have a column that shows the actuals. As of December 31st, the city collected a total of about $31 million, mostly from the property tax, and we have about 89% of our revenue collected already. Some of the line items don't show a collection of revenue at a higher rate, like the property tax, as we know, the majority of the property tax payers, they pay upfront, the others is due to billing and account receivables, et cetera. As you can see in this chart, it's the same as the first chart, but you can see the main source of revenue for the City of North Miami Beach is property tax, and that's followed also to utility surcharge. So now, let's talk about the expenditures. The first table showed that we collected $30 million. The first table showed that we collected $30 million as of December 1st, December 31st, 2024. As of December 31st, 2024, we spent $20 million. And again, some of the expenditures here are lagging, of course. The main expenditures, of course, what we have like for the pension, that's something that we pay upfront at the beginning of every fiscal year, and others are lagging. As I mentioned, the city is going through closing the prior fiscal year and going through an audit and making sure that the invoices from last year are recorded properly, and we're also opening the new fiscal year for the new fiscal expenditure activities. Again, this chart just is the same as the first table, it just showed the magnitude of certain items we have. For example, you see the police department at the highest budget for the city and other departments, vice versa. This table shows the nine-point, the budget that the city has adopted for salaries, and of course, there are certain ways you can present this information as far as expenditures. I think for the personnel budget, we spent about 75%. We're supposed to be 100%, and most of it can be vacant possession that hasn't been filled on time, et cetera. Of course, when you look at the city's budget, the majority of it is personnel budget, and that's what you see in the first chart. The capital program, the city commission approved a $9.8 million of general fund money to be on the CIP budget. As of the first quarter, the actuals are not there yet, but I think, as you know, a CIP project takes time for planning and execution and procurement, and we're hoping by the next quarter, you will see some activities in this table. And again, this shows also the chart that the city has. Our major fund is always be the general fund, followed, of course, by the water fund. Citywide expenditures, of course, the general fund is our main source of expenditures, and also the same analogy for the water fund as well. Salaries related, again, this chart is basically showing the expenditures for personnel by departments, and you can see there are some other departments at some sort of equity level, and with our highest is the police department. Any questions?
Commissioner Smith, you gave me that look, so I'm assuming you...
My look didn't do anything for you?
Commissioner Florham.
I'm just joking, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Smith can go first.
No, I appreciate you bringing it to us. I like to see how it's going as we get further into the year and that we're budgeting well where we said we would be, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You be sending us a copy of this presentation?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, our next item is... Oh, sorry.
I didn't do anything for him.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Florham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a request. If at some time within the next 60 days, we can get a workshop to kind of walk Commissioners and others that may be interested through the budgeting process and how this works, because I believe we all need, you know, a 101 course, because after we vote for the budget, we need to keep up with it to make sure that, you know, things are going as planned, so I'd like to make that request.
Commissioner, absolutely. As part of the budget calendar that I sent over to you all, we made the process where it's essentially year-round. Staff has already started internally as of January, so we're hoping that in March, we're able to meet with you all to not only go through, but also discuss your individual priorities, and then we can have a workshop to be able to talk about where those priorities are, and also talk about where staff sees any type of available revenue that's coming in or things that we're seeing from the legislation as well. And then once we get into June, we get the first estimate for revenue. We'll be going back like we did last year to talk about what the revenue means, how that affects us compared to what the priority from the commission and staff has been able to allocate. So we're definitely doing this, and we'll be in front of the commission and to the public multiple times this year throughout the entire year.
I appreciate you doing that, because I know there was a request, I believe, last time we were doing the budget, to start earlier, but in addition to that, the 101 workshop, I think, is essential even before we start doing that. You know, anyone can take advantage of it or not, it would be up to, you know, whoever wants to, but I think there should be some time set aside to do a budget 101, so that way, you know, we...
Absolutely, yes.
We'll reach out to each of you for schedule.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
If I can piggyback on that to the mayor, please bring to us at that budget workshop what the CIT money can go to, how much we're spending on consultants. I'd like a little breakdown before we plan the next budget, where we need to spend the money based on what we're doing in the past and has it been working.
Correct, Madam Commissioner. I think one of the reasons I kept the presentation as is, is I really wanted to know from the commission what information is not really in the budget report, because the financial information can be presented in different ways, and the best approach for it is the financial information shows the operation of the city. And I think there are certain ways we can do that. I think number one, through the city manager, we're going to be meeting with each one of you to get some feedback about how you want the financial information presented to you, whether contract, personnel, non-personnel. And the second thing, I think we're gearing up for March, this will be our first budget workshop, we haven't set a date yet, that would be basically the commission's strategic priorities that you want to see the next fiscal year's money allocated to. So within the next couple of days, you will be hearing from us and the city manager to set those meetings, so we can get more direct feedback from you.
The way I always like to work the budget, if I may, is to say, this is mandated, must not touch money, that we have to use for contracts, salaries, chemicals, that we know we can't touch. How much money do we have left, so we can decide where we need to put it? But with the money we get, that half a penny from transit, I want to know how much it is and where it's going, and where can it go? And I would also like to know, really and truly, a breakdown of how much we really are spending on consultants for all this. I appreciate that very much. If you're having that workshop, that's what I'd like them to bring.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, thank you for indulging us. I just want to make sure that we're clear on what the request is. It's a budget 101 that's open to everyone...
Correct.
...so that we can know what goes into a budget. You know, 101, that's like entry level, right? And then from there, we work our way into all of the details. By the time we get to what the manager's talking about with strategic plans and all those things, we're pretty well-versed or have had that refresher so that we can really contribute to the process. So that's the request. So if we can have that prior to strategic planning, I think that's essential, and I'm assuming my colleagues support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just don't understand why we would have to have a one-on-one budget 101.
101.
No, 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 no. A 101, is it a group, or is it just one-on-one?
No, it's a group setting.
Okay, good, yes, thank you, because I don't want them to be doing one-on-one with each of us.
Right.
No, if you don't need it, you don't need it, I mean, but if you want it, I mean, this is going to be your first budget, this is going to be your first budget.
I love it, yeah.
Okay.
I think what he wanted to say is budget for dummies, right?
See? Okay, we're going to stay positive, we're going to stay positive.
I have a question. The question was, is what is the unassigned fund balance at this point? Because I know last year, we had a high carryover...
That's a very good question.
...to Commissioner Smith's point of not knowing what's actually being expended and so forth. To trend with us not actually seeing a lot of the projects go online, I'm assuming that right now we would have a large carryover at this rate. So my question is, what is the unassigned fund balance right now?
That's a really good question. I think that should be the first slide to see how the city ended the last fiscal year. The only thing is that we haven't finished the audit yet, so we don't have an audited amount. The audit has been taking place currently. We're hoping that within the next couple of months, we will have more of an idea what that surplus is, the unassigned fund, but currently, we don't have that number yet.
And Commissioner, to also remind you, any budget that was set aside for CIP projects, that no longer goes into some kind of surplus or anything, that stays with the project year over year, whether there's a PO or not, so that money is encumbered. And this past fiscal year, we use funds to fund projects from the fund balance.
Which is good, but you know, given the fact that materials are more expensive, if the project is not done within this year, even though the money was allocated for, odds are, we won't have enough to really do it since, you know, the market rate is higher. To Commissioner Florham's point, I do think the 101 would be good, because we need to know just how it works, how the process works, just so when we get to that process of, okay, what are our priorities, we know the mechanics of it, so I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so very much, CFO. Madam Clerk, public comment.
Good evening, everyone. The mayor and commissioner of the City of North Miami Beach has opened a meeting for public comment at this time. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Speaker, you'll be called to the podium. Please state your name or the name of the organization which you are representing during public... Excuse me. The City of North Miami Beach requests that all in attendance exercise civility towards each other, and our first signed speaker is Mr. Daniel Pierre, and then Ketley Jashim.
Wow, I am the winner. I am the first. Wow, thank you, thank you, thank you. Tonight, I am here, so I'm looking at everybody, I see so far, everybody looking good, the floor look good, so far, I'm so happy.
Your name, please.
So anyway, my name is Daniel Pierre. My address is 15240 northeast 10 Court. Okay? So tonight, I am here tonight for my neighbors. I am here to speak for my neighbors, and my neighborhood, we have a big, big problem in that neighborhood, but sometimes, people, they don't want to come in here, they don't want to come in to speak, so anyway, I don't know about the English, they don't want to come in, but whatever the election come in, everybody go out to choose, to vote for every one of you. So when it's time for us to have the service from our beautiful city, sometimes, we never see no one, they never spend no money in that neighborhood, so we've been paying tax, everything, so I don't know where the money is spent. So tonight, I am here, so to speak about the problem we got in that neighborhood. So I've been coming there for a long time here to speak about that problem. The problem is still there, they never do anything. So almost last eight months like that, I'm almost got killed in my yard, almost got killed. People driving, and my friend, they almost coming inside the house. So that's the way they do the speed, just like they driving, just like the I-95, they don't care, they're ten, they do whatever they want to do, no respect. So I've been crying for a long time, so all we come in here to ask for, at least for the city to do something, because we've been paying tax to make everybody happy, share fair for everybody, so we need for some speed bump in that neighborhood. We need that. So at this, you know, you cannot wait until somebody got killed, until the kid got killed, so not, so I've been coming here for a long time, nothing ever done, so that's the reason here, I'm coming here again tonight to see, because you might hear my voice, thinking about it, so that money we have and the budget, whatever, so try to do something, even we put two speed bump, I will be, we will be happy about that. Please do something for us, because we are the one city. I, we hope, we share the money for every neighborhood, make everybody happy. Whatever you could do, if you could do one for that neighborhood, you do one for each one, that mean everybody will be happy. At least we do something, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
We don't interject, but did anybody else hear when he says one, he means one police officer for that neighborhood? Was that what he was referring to? He wanted just one? Speed bump. Not police, speed bump, speed bump, okay.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ketley Jashim, and I reside in the City of North Miami Beach. This evening, I'm here to talk a little bit about fiscal responsibility. For someone who had worked for a financial service, to keep coming here, and a lot of us who campaigned, the last campaign, campaigned on fiscal responsibility, I think it is really a tragedy for us to keep spending money on traffic study, keep paying for things that we all know, if you campaigning in this city, you went knocking on some doors. So I'm sure that a lot of us know exactly where the traffic coming needs to be placed. Right there behind City Hall, accidents happen all the time. It took a lot of neighbors, a lot of effort, and Commissioner Lenzu to finally get some help for us to put a four-way stop sign right there. You leader every day, you all, I have told you, there's a bunch of speed bumps sitting somewhere in one of those buildings that we have, and the city manager or whoever is responsible have not placed them, and it been months, and now you want to pay on 11.3 for a professional engineering service for the study and design of traffic coming projects. Please don't waste my money, okay? That $31 million that you are collecting from property taxes can be used in the city, because a lot of federal employees are losing their job. Maybe Elon Musk need to come here with his Dodge Department and other to come and tell you all exactly where you are wasting money. Please stop wasting our funds on trying to get people to tell you exactly where you need traffic coming. They needed a new leader, they are needed throughout the city. Fleming Heights, where Mr. Kazan keep telling you all that people are running rampant, people could get killed, so no one seems to be listening, okay? Something need to be done, please listen to the resident. Yes, I know, Phyllis, that you listen, I know, because we've been telling you all the same thing, we know where these things need to be placed. Please stop wasting our funds. Fiscal responsibility, a lot of people are losing their jobs, okay? So this is not the time to be spending almost half, past half a million dollars on trying to tell me when I can tell you, when I can show you exactly where these traffic coming need to be placed. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Josh Jemmy, and then Bruce Lombardo.
My name is Josh Jemmy. I'm here once again, I was here maybe a month ago, a few weeks ago, and I'm here about the removing a fluoride from the water, because this issue cannot be ignored any longer. At the last meeting that I was here, the council agreed to hold a workshop to discuss the risks of fluoridation, yet the weeks have gone on, and we still have no confirmed date, no plan, and no transparency, really. This delay raises serious concerns about whether the council is truly acting in the best interest of its residents. If a discussion is necessary, then why delay it? If fluoridation is a safe and beneficial, why avoid an open conversation? The residents of North Miami Beach deserve answers and action tonight. The federal government has declared... The federal government has declared chronic disease a national emergency. On February 13th, 2025, excuse me. The president signed an executive order declaring chronic disease a national crisis and directing federal agencies to eliminate harmful environmental exposures. Fluoride must be part of that discussion. Fluoride is a known environmental exposure that has never been FDA-approved for ingestion. The executive order mandates that federal agencies reevaluate outdated health policies and ensure public safety. If the federal government is taking action, why is North Miami Beach refusing to even schedule a workshop? If leaders across the country are reevaluating fluoridation, why are we falling behind? Delaying the workshop is negligence. Every day this workshop is delayed, thousands of residents, including children, pregnant women, and vulnerable individuals, excuse me. Every day the workshop is delayed, thousands of residents, including children, pregnant women, and vulnerable individuals continue consuming florsolic acid without their consent. If fluoride's safety and necessity are still being debated, why is it still in our water? In Florida alone, at least seven cities have already voted to remove fluoride. Nearly 20 communities nationwide have ended fluoride since October. Other cities are taking action. Why isn't North Miami Beach? Fluoridation must be paused until the workshop occurs. If this council refuses to confirm a workshop date, then fluoridation must be paused immediately. The Make America Healthy Again Commission is already investigating fluoride's risks. If the federal government is scrutinizing this issue, North Miami Beach should not be ignoring it. Continuing to fluoridate without a workshop date sends a clear message that this council is avoiding accountability. The council's responsibility. This council is elected to represent the people, not bureaucratic delays, not special interests, and certainly not inaction. Will this council confirm the workshop date tonight? The public deserves a straight answer. If no date is confirmed, then fluoridation must be paused immediately. Anything less is irresponsible and a failure to protect public health. The residents of North Miami Beach have waited long enough. We are not asking, we are demanding answers. The time for empty promises is over. I urge this council to take immediate action, confirm the workshop date tonight, and pause fluoridation until the workshop takes place.
Thank you.
Bruce Lamberto, Eastern Shores. Good evening, mayor and council, commission. Year ago, I was up here on the trolley issue when the contract came up a year ago for renewal. And I said, mentioned that we should be maybe eliminating a few of those trolleys because there's no, little to no ridership on them. The one from the Park and Ride to Aventura Mall, the one in Eastern Shores has very little. I'll grant you the Highland Village and the Washington Park have ridership. We need to keep at least two of the trolleys running to qualify for the funding. Those two would be the perfect examples of what you want to keep. But the other three or four, that fund, the CITT funding for this traffic calming is a perfect example of what you can use that funds, those funds for. It would pay for that. It doesn't have to come out of our general fund. And again, you're being accountable to the taxpayers by taking this money and not wasting it. You're using for something bricks and mortar that you're actually going to see. The trolleys, like in Eastern Shores and the Park and Ride, it helps a dozen people. These traffic calming is going to help thousands of people. And you're going to maybe prevent a fatality, maybe serious injuries. Certainly, property damage accidents will be eliminated, not eliminated, but reduced by this traffic calming. So here, you want to have an empty trolley driving back and forth between Walmart and Eastern Shores, burning diesel fuel at the end of the year, you have nothing to show for it. Use that funding for this traffic calming. I've talked to every one of you about it. Commissioner Smith gets it. She brings it up at every meeting. And a lot of you just sit there like lumps on a log and don't say nothing. Don't acknowledge the fact that she's correct. She's correct on this. So I'm going to ask you again, please try to divert some of this funding for this. It's going to help our budget. This is money that does not impact our budget at all. It's, and I want to call it free money, but it's money given to us by the county for transportation projects and transportation. Almost anything qualifies for that CIT funding. Repaving the streets, sidewalks, curb and gutter, drainage, all can come out of the CIT, and the engineering, all can come out of the CITT funding. So please use that money wisely. Please don't waste our general funds to do these things, these projects. And again, we were told last year ago that any one of the trolleys can be discontinued with a 30-day notice. Even with the contract, there's a 30-day notice clause that you can cut one, two, three, whatever you determine that can be cut out. But I can tell you, living in Eastern Shores, that thing rides empty most of the time. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Dana Smith.
I'm coming with a positive note. Anyway, yeah, I'm here. I'm a proud father of an autism child. And I'm pretty much coming to do about autism. I want to do an autism walk and concert.
Sir, please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Dana Smith, for the record. How you doing, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners? Appreciate the opportunity to tell you all about autism. Autism started at 10,000 each child. Well, it was 10,000 per child, like, can catch autism. Now it's down to 36. So it's a big, it's a big hazard that is going on that the urban community does not know or the central community does not know. That it's a lot of, a lot of different organizations and ABA programs that can help them and provide for them that they are free programs. And I just want to get the word out because that's what I do for a living. I'm a consultant. I'm a promotion consultant. I'm pretty much the reason for Rick Ross, Flo Rata, DJ Khaled, pretty much all the big artists in the inner city. I'm the reason why they got big. So I know how to do the promotion and marketing side. And now I'm learning more about the research side of autism. And autism is very high, high right now. And I want to just get the word out and let them know that we want to provide different services and different things that goes on in the community. Just like the UM has a thing called the card. We have different programs that, that likes Autism Speaks, different spectrum programs that can help and develop these kids that's growing up with autism. So I pretty much want to like propose a, about autism. And I have my stuff right here. Just as well, I'm going to be at the, on the walk this weekend. I have, I'm one of the vendors. And I'm going to be giving away a different couple of products for free to the kids or whoever want them. So I, you know, I got a little bit of stuff here that if you want to see it, y'all can have it. And pretty much this is the proposal that I'm putting, I had put together. So pretty much, you know, I don't be into all that long talk. I'm not long-winded, but I am good at what I do. I've been doing it over 27 years. I have my own printing company. I have my own like one-stop shop. Anything to do with marketing, I can do it. I'm a branding consultant and that just as well. And thank you for everything. I'm not here for the, you know.
Thank you.
All right. Like I said, y'all can check in and look it over, or whatever.
Clerk would dispute. Clerk would dispute. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Jeb Hamweger, resident Monticello for over 20 years. The reason why I'm here tonight, since our last meeting, there's been a lot of developments from our state agencies and comments that have come out. And memos that city, other city managers and other cities have written to their city commissions about Florida law and the Florida administrative code, which states clearly that when the Department of Health comes out with a recommendation or guidance, that's who we're supposed to follow. And that recommendation and guidance came out on November 22nd. And now we're getting, three months later, we still don't have a workshop. And so the issue is, is that according to the Florida administrative code, we're supposed to follow the regulator. And that's why I'm asking tonight, it's very important that we respect informed consent of our community. As a parent, I believe that it's, parents have the right to say how they can medicate their kids. As a city commission, you do not have the right to practice against the Department of Health and medicate our community, our children, without their parents' permission. So the city of Longwood just passed last night, they joined a whole list of cities. The majority of cities are fast. They're moving rapidly to listen to the surgeon general. Right now, birth to six months, 0.01 milligrams recommended amount. This is from the CDC and the Department of Health. We're having 0.7 milligrams in our water right now. So we are, you know, we are not following the administrative, Florida administrative code. The city manager in Longwood clearly stated that you have to, as a city manager, recommend as an officer. And by not doing that, you are failing our residents. So immediately, I'm asking the commission to, because of light of Florida administrative code, to make a motion to pause fluoridation until the workshop. We are causing a huge amount of liability to our city, our utility. We are causing a huge amount of liability and danger to the health and safety of our children, our babies. And we need to immediately pause fluoridation to reduce liability.
Fifteen seconds.
You have the Florida Department of Health behind you, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. You have the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services that have all publicly come out and said that you will not be, have any liability if you choose not to fluoridate. Now the risk is on us if we continue to fluoridate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That was the last signed speaker.
Okay, thank you so very much. Next on agenda is announcements. Madam Clerk. Communications, sorry.
Good evening, mayor and commission. I will give you the event list from now to the end of March. The 11th Heart Health 5K Walk and Run is this Saturday, February 22nd at 9:00 a.m. at the Senator Gwen Margolis Amphitheater. There will be a free 3D mammogram happening at 8:00 a.m. that Saturday at the North Miami Beach Discovery Library. Senior Luncheon Friday, February 28th at 11:00 a.m. at the McDonald Center. Dr. Seuss's birthday, Saturday, March 1st at 1:00 p.m. at the North Miami Beach Discovery Library. Free community sumo that Wednesday, March 5th at 6:00 p.m. at the Ulieta Community Center. Career Connection with Career Source on Monday, March 17th, 10:00 a.m. at the McDonald Center. City Commission meeting Tuesday, March 18th at 6:00 p.m. here at the Commission Chamber. Bike ride in the 305 Sunday, March 23rd at 9:00 a.m. here, it starts at City Hall. And the Senior Luncheon Friday, March 28th at 11:00 a.m. at the McDonald Center. And that's all.
Thank you. And next item is the one I was asking Madam Clerk, because city commission reports.
Commissioner Chernoff.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Manager, have we set a date for the fluoride workshop?
No, sir.
And are we close to? What's going on?
We are waiting for further direction of the commission. We're waiting for feedback from adjourning or adjacent municipalities that we serve for their thoughts and opinions. We are waiting for all presenters to confirm availability. And we are waiting for availability from the, from the diocese and community.
All right, from the diocese, from my standpoint, please make the workshop happen sooner than later. We need to answer what's going on, and it's the right thing to do. So at least, and give a deadline to our sister cities that are receiving our water and tell them that they need, we need an answer from them, you know, yesterday. Thank you. All right, chief, Juan Pania, our new chief, congratulations. Our deputy chief, Stuart Nichols, congratulations. They had a beautiful award ceremony, naming them permanent. So thank you. Look forward to it. And on that behalf, this week, four. What are these? Footprints from our police department, saying they were at my house. Well, I appreciate that. And it's under your direction. I'll give you credit for it. They haven't been there in a while, and I've seen the cars in the neighborhood, so thank you very much.
Yes, they walk every neighborhood like they should. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Dolphin Cancer Challenge is this Saturday, also with the Heart Walk, the same day. So I will be at the cancer thing at 7:00 in the morning, and I will make it to the.
We're not talking.
To the Heart Walk at 10, around 10. The Commissioner Mickey Steinberg has opened the Mom and Pop Small Business Grants. Okay, this is from February 18th until March 7th. What that is, is if you own a business in the commissioner's district, which is North Miami Beach, North Miami, Surfside, all different cities, you apply for this money, which is free money, to the business owner. You, we, I used to sit on the Mom and Pop Grants Committee. You give, we've given $3,000 or $5,000 each person who applies for it. And it's for businesses to change your computers, to redo your signage, to do all kinds of things. There are restrictions, but you got to just go for the applications. You can go to the, look up on Mickey Steinberg's website. We'll have it there. Okay, also, the county is doing a tenants know your rights and legal clinic on March 15th. Okay, at 8401 Northwest 14th Ave. So if you're interested, I'll leave this with the city. And for that, good night. Everybody have a great weekend.
Commissioner Flormon.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, Happy Black History Month to everyone. You know, we need to do our part, every one of us, in making sure that we preserve our nation's history. And, you know, one of the ways of doing that is by preserving black history and making sure that we highlight all of the contributions of the African diaspora here in this country. And so it was good to see the, I believe it's the Miami Black, is it Miami, Mr. Mayor, the?
Miami Black.
The, Mr. Mayor, what was the organization that was here earlier? Black Miami Day? Yeah, Black Miami. Yeah, I want to make sure we get the name right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How's it, Black Miami?
It's good to see Profiles in Black Miami. As well too, we have Nadez Green, who's, who's, Nadez Charles, who's also, Nadez Green, okay. Well, Green Charles, but wanted to make sure I highlight her and her work because she's also working hard to make sure that she preserves Miami Dade black history. And so that's, that's very important. So Happy Black History Month to you all. Aside from that, I, you know, we have on the agenda, and I just want to, you know, preface my discussion on, on this item. I know I pulled the item on the consulting for streetlights and, and the traffic calming. I pulled that, I withdrew that item. But in addition to that, we do have an opportunity, commission, to kind of reel in some of, some of this consulting with item number 11.5. And so, you know, I look forward to taking a deep dive into that and kind of seeing what we're going to do to phase out when it comes to, to these contracts with our water utility, being that we now have a new CIP person on board. And we're doing, we're making efforts in our CIP to, to try to do a lot of things in-house. So I think we, we have an opportunity here to, to kind of forecast and see how long are we going to be continuing with these work orders? So that, you know, so that we can really have a water department or water utility that is entirely under our, under our control and, and that we're doing the actual work. So looking forward to talking about that. And I just wanted to kind of preface my comments during discussion on that item right now so you guys can start taking a look at it, 11.5. Thank you so much. Look forward to the next meeting.
Before you move on, Commissioner Chernoff had one final thought.
One more thing, Mr. Manager. A direction from me and I think almost all of my colleagues, please remove the shading that you put on our windows or cut it in half. Thank you. It's very important.
The shading.
The shading that they put on the office? I don't like it. Do you like it?
This is very important. Now, we've given direction to the, to the city manager. I think we're all on the same page on that. He's going to get on top of it. That's, we've got top men working on it. So that's Indiana Jones. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Jean.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start off by echoing.
I wanted to start off by echoing the congratulations to our new chief and deputy chief, as well as happy Chinese New Year and happy Black History Month, and looking forward to seeing everyone at the Heart Health Walk. I wanted to also mention, after a briefing that we got from the National League of Cities in reference to transportation, Mr. Manager, I wanted to ask about EV charging stations. You know, they kind of cut the federal funding to EV charging and wanted to kind of hear what we're, what direction we're moving into. Does it affect us or not? I've had conversations with our manager as well about looking into short-term rental fees for, for us to implement those fees in the city that can eventually help us to, you know, as it relates to revenue, revenue growing projects. So I'm looking forward to hearing and your sharing that, those details with my colleagues, as well as our youth advisory board is back, and we're looking for teens who want to be more engaged with the city. So our Parks Department is taking the lead with our youth advisory, and I'm looking forward to, we have about 12 teens that are currently on board, and they'll be, their names will be presented before the commission, but we're looking for more teens to be involved in the youth advisory board. And many of you may know that March is National Crochet Mar, Month. So we're looking to do some activations with our teens in the library as well, to activate them in crafts and things that they can actually become entrepreneurs with. So again, let's have a great meeting, and thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. First and foremost, I hope everybody had a sweet Valentine's with the ones they love, and if you want by yourself, I hope you love yourself enough to have a great day.
Oh, man, that's so cute.
So that's what they say, love yourself first.
Right. Yes.
All right. So I have a few announcements, and I want to piggyback on a couple things first. For one thing, I'd like to have that meeting next week, but I did not respond to a couple of the residents, because I think March 5th, the state is going to be voting on fluoride. So I really was kind of gonna see what kind of guide they had, because they were looking at March 11th, even though nobody mentioned that date. That was the request I got. I'm not sure I'll be in town, but if we're just going to discuss it and make a commitment to wait to, after March or something, but I think we should have the meeting. I think the public, now that it's a month later, deserves that. And if you come, at a workshop, you come, and if you don't, let the public know who wants to help them. Okay. I want to also piggyback on the fact that we're going to take down the, I don't know, I believe in transparency and the way they put up a shield in front of our glass, people coming in and coming out, you can't see who it is. And I think when you're there alone on Saturday or Sunday, it's kind of, you can't see. So I spoke to a few people. Do they like it? They don't. The majority of us do not. But I think anything like that, Mr. Manager, where we're affected personally, you should kind of take a poll before we spend the money. So if you go in that direction, I'd appreciate it. And I want to piggyback on why I, thank you very much for coming before us, and I chased after you. I apologize to you, Ketley, that I chased after him just to find out his address. His address is 10th Court. They want to put that on 9th Court. Nobody listened to me last month. I told them that the addresses are wrong. On 26th Avenue, from 163rd Street to where they want to put it, there's one road, it doesn't even go through. It's an L shape. One road, one condo there. Let's, if there's a problem on that road, maybe we should have a police officer there a couple hours. Which, by the way, I do want to congratulate our police chief, I want to congratulate our deputy, but our, his staff, the whole, the whole city of North Miami Beach. I know everybody that's a police officer is envious, and if they aren't, they should be, if they don't work here. All right. So a couple quick announcements. State Representative Wallace Astor, Astai, will be here on our February 28th luncheon. He is going to bring from Tallahassee for the seniors, the elderly division, is gonna come and talk. Anybody that's interested in hearing what's going on in the state, what they have to offer, you must make a reservation. The room only holds 100 people. You must call the Recreation Department, and for that luncheon, it is our favorite four-letter F-word, free. Okay? So that's February 28th, from 11 till 1:30, and that, I think, is gonna be a very important I also, as long as we're on our four-letter F-word that's free, the mammogram is coming here to the library for a free mammogram for all women from 8 to 4 on February 22nd. You must call for reservation. I'll give the number, if you want to play this back, but you, it is February 22nd from 8 to 4, Heart Walk, which the library can maybe also give you the number. It's going to be at the library, which is where the Heart Work's gonna start, is that correct?
Wait, we, the, the commissioner says the women, uh,
Now, where's the Heart Work starting?
At the amphitheater.
Okay. At the amphitheater, so the library's right there. Yeah. So 786-353-1944. Now, the Heart Work, when she says if I can do it, anybody can do it, Commissioner Smuckler, because of her mishap with her leg, I walked the circle Saturday to see if I could, actually it was a Saturday, a Sunday, I walked the circle to see if I could walk that three miles. I only saw one person I knew, which I was surprised, and it was Senator Pizzo yelling, "Good going, good going." I will tell you, I've been taking Advil ever since. So I will be out there with my Advil, and I will walk that with you, Commissioner. I just want people to notice that there's so much to read. Dr. Seuss's birthday, they're gonna let you make hats on March, March 1st. So please, look at our websites. There were two events that were so outstanding, so outstanding. The Black History Month, that, that video that they have made, I can't tell you how much I enjoyed it. To hear people that went to kindergarten and now their grandchildren are there, telling us how the city was formulated, telling us things about not being able to cross the wall, and the wall was torn down, in North Miami Beach. You missed it. So, look, today, and this will be the last thing, Mayor, I promise, today I was down there for the senior business luncheon, small business luncheon. They held the oldest writer from the Miami Herald. She's 87. Okay. She spoke for probably an hour. Everybody begged her to not stop. We wanted her to stay two days. Her stories, her insight, it was an amazing, I'm sorry it wasn't taped. So please, look at, it's gonna cost us the same to put it on. If it costs us $1,000 or $5,000, it doesn't, if we have 20 people, I'm sad. If we have 2,000 people, I'll be so happy. So please look at our websites, please go into social media. I don't do it, but I have a daughter that will. And so, just attend. You won't be sorry. Everything that we do in North Miami Beach is above and beyond, and 99.9% of them are our favorite four-letter F-word, free. So bless you all, and thank you for the extra time.
Before we move on, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Jean had a last thought.
Mr. Manager, if we can get more content on Channel 77, like, for example, the in-house team that we have could have recorded today's luncheon and talk, more content on that channel relative to the events that we have.
Mr. Mayor, just one, you did make a correction, and I just wanted to be mindful of that. Her name is Nadez Green, and she is the Director of Community Research and Storytelling at the Community Justice Project. So I just wanted to recognize her correctly. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Smuckler?
Good evening, everyone. I want to acknowledge Black History Month and the Chinese New Year, but I also want to acknowledge, and that's why we're wearing red, even though it's like this little bit, tiny bit right there, but it's still. We are wearing red in honor of Heart Health Month, and to observe or honor Heart Health Month, we are having our Heart Health Walk this Saturday, but it, this year's gonna be a walk slash run. I am walking it, not running it. I didn't run before my accident, so I'm certainly not gonna start running now. But, and we also added a, from a 2.5 to a 5K. And also at the Heart Health Walk, as Commissioner Smith said, the commissioner says the women who is also hosting the Heart Health Walk, is also hosting the mammogram mobile, actually, you know, used to be for women 40 to 60, but this time they're making it for women 40 to 70 years old with no implants and no insurance. You can register at 786-353-1944, and they'll actually be there the whole day. They'll be there from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They'll be parked at the library. And, you know, we're, we're talking about all our expenses, but, and I think I briefly brought it up when we met for our workshop, but the constitutional offices are going to be,
We're gonna get taxed.
We're gonna get taxed on that, and it's gonna be about $500,000, half a million.
A little bit more than that.
Yeah. It's gonna be about half a million dollars. So, you know, we, when we're, when people start asking us to lower our millage rate, we need to start remembering that there's an additional $500,000.
Accounting, tax, tax collector control.
And the Department of Elections.
The five, five constitutional.
They have, and it's an extra 2%, they can, and they're gonna do it. They, they go up to,
The sheriff.
Yeah, so, but, but, no, almost all of them, all of them. So basically, like, they, they give them a 2% cap, but they can go, they, they're all gonna hit 2%. They're not gonna just say, "Oh, we're gonna give you 2%," but, I'm sorry, go on, sorry.
No, no, you can continue that.
Madam Clerk.
Right.
Oh, she wasn't?
No, I'm not done.
Oh, I thought you were done.
No, I was, but I was like,
Go ahead, Commissioner Smuckler.
Talking to him. Okay, so anyhow, of course, congratulations to Chief Peneo and Deputy, Deputy Chief Nichols, and as always, thank you to our police department for keeping our families, our visitors, and our employees safe. Good night. Well, not good night, 'cause almost good night.
And, and real quick, Mr. Mayor, just 'cause she mentioned a Chinese event, I didn't mention that, 'cause I forgot, but it was also amazing, all day, with every kind of music and every kind of fun for the children. I'm telling you, those events are out there. Thank you, Commissioner Smuckler, for reminding me.
Vice Mayor Lin Su?
Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody had a, if you celebrate Lunar New Year, happy Lunar New Year. It's the Year of the Snake. If you're celebrating Black History Month, I acknowledge your black, you know, the black heritage is very important in our, in our community. I also want to wish you a happy President's Day. I know some might not like, but, but we are just respecting the office. So I've been in office, sworn in now 70 days. Can you believe that? Feels like two years. Yeah, time flies when you're having fun. Okay, so there are a couple of promises that I made, and I still would like to accomplish them. All the resident-facing services are in progress. I have updated myself with the city manager. We have, the building department is gonna go online, so all the permits that you're getting would be there and ready to go probably by the end of April, which is fantastic. And this year, by the way, April. I know we have a lot of delays for everything, so just to keep you excited, we have that going up this year. Our, our service department is improving, our customer service department, thanks to our new HR, Stacy Hippsman. She has done a training for customer service. We're in North Miami Beach, we're going to have, you'd never, you'd never believe you'd be saying that, that we would have excellent customer service, and I'm looking forward to that every single day, and I'm counting on it. Okay? So also, I, so 70 days have gone by. I'm still waiting for Mr. Mayor to assign me to a, to a board or a committee to liaise.
It's gonna come out tomorrow, tomorrow.
All right.
The committee signs will go, come out tomorrow, tentatively, scheduled, so.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, that's good. I, I need to pressure him on the dais so that he would give it to me. All right. Okay, so then, speaking of that, I, we also had a sunshine meeting, myself and the mayor. He expressed his passion about septic to sewer. I also expressed my concerns about certain residents, smaller, limited funding, that would have an issue with converting. So, you know, we're, we're still working on that, and I think we are going to see how we can take our city to the next level. I'm also looking forward to our next sunshine meeting, Mr. Mayor, so where I can express some of my passions. So, all right. So my outreach initiative, I don't know if anybody has had a chance to participate, but Neighborhood Voices, it's a lot of fun. It's a very casual setting. In February, we've had two. So one is in, one was in Washington Park, and the other is in the Pickwick, Pan Yulita, and Winward area. The two events were great. I got a chance to listen to what your concerns are, what your issues are. And of course, what we hear is like safety. There is a lot of, a lot of things like not enough lights on the street. We hear road conditions with potholes. Road conditions that are very good cause speeding, so we need to put, maybe we should put potholes instead of speed bumps, and that way it'll slow them down as well. But that'll be the faster way to slow down traffic, is to put them in a bunch of potholes. Anyway, that's, that's joking aside. Street cleanliness is important, you know, we have illegal dumpings, we have people who have pets, walk their pets over and leave their, you know, their pet remains and, and leave without that. So I think like, you know, Public Works has some things, has some work, has a lot of work on their hands with signages and making sure that all those areas are taken care of. Garbage pickup remains to be like one of the hottest topics. We, I know Coastal's been working pretty hard in trying to get, to reconcile everything. I think one of our leading garbage, garbage advocates is here as well. So, you know, I mean, they have been reconciling with her. So if you have any issues, please email the manager, the commission, you know, whoever you need to get the attention of, so that we can also get Coastal to help reconcile that. So with that said, we have, and we've also accomplished a couple of things, and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Nicholas Williams for helping me from the Public Works team, and led by Sam Salmacona. They had closed up a couple of ditches that had happened from the garbage trucks digging into the swales and causing like, you know, issues with the streets and people walking into it and puddles and whatnot. So he got that and communicated with me from the time they identified the property, identified the, you know, the little ditch, and then finally, when it was complete. So, you know, I think you have to, you have to speak up, let us know, so that we can move everything forward for you, okay? I also wanted to echo what the commissioners have been saying about the fluoridation workshop. The date was set for March 11th. Dr. Ladapo is actually coming to the Health Committee for the county at 11:00 a.m. that day. So we have another workshop that's mirroring it in the evening, that way people could attend and ask questions. I think it's important, it's not important with, like, right now, at the point, at this point, it's important how you would take care of yourself and how it's safe for you or unsafe for you. Like, that is what the workshop is going to address. It's not going to address, you, at the end of the day, you make your own decision to take care of your health, but you need to make informed decisions, and once you hear the workshop, however you decide, I would respect that. But I think like, as a, as a city, we, like Mr. Hanweger mentioned, we have no right to medicate anyone. And finally, I hope that our, our commission will, you know, put our stamp down on what date we want to have the workshop. Finally, Miami Dade County is having a career and job fair tomorrow, 9 to 11, at the Jean Jusse Community Center in Oak Grove. So if you know anybody who's looking for something to do and, and has a, you know, wants to work in government, there is something going on tomorrow. Thank you very much, and I look forward to our meeting today.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Commissioner Jean, have a, a final thought.
Quick, to Commissioner Smith's points, Commissioner Seuss's points,
Quick, to Commissioner Smith's point, Commissioner Sue's point, are we waiting for the timeline with the state? I wanted to kind of hear from you on our, you know, since we're waiting on different stakeholders to chime in on their availability, but if the state has a looming decision that may affect us, how do you want to work through that? I mean...
I'll leave that at the, the commission's discretion as to when they want to hold the workshop.
And, like, thank you for that. I will be brief with my statements. Thank you, Washington Park, Waters Council, St. Mary's, St. Mary's, for missionary, I got to make sure, for the wonderful, you know, gift and recognition, I appreciate you guys. I've got a lot of work to do this, tonight, and I look forward to being brief and to the point and succinct and working as a team moving forward, because one thing the committee wants us to do is to be collective and to be honest and to be respectful, but to work as one voice moving forward together. So with that, as brief as I am, let's move forward to the next item. Thank you. And, oh, sorry, all right, thank you for the Commissioner's status, for these nice little coins. I have mine, it's in the, it's right here. You guys always do a bang-up job. Last time you guys gave something else, I forgot what it was, last year, was it two years ago or a year ago? Something, you guys did something. But you guys always do great things, so miles of talk to you guys, and I appreciate you guys. Next item.
Consent.
Consent, dude, okay. See my red line?
Move to approve.
Yes, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the titles?
Yes, sir.
Oh, and remember, you have to read everything.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item 9.1, Commission Conference Meeting Minutes of January 21st, 2025. Agenda item 9.2, Regular Commission Meeting Minutes of January 21st, 2025. Agenda item 9.3, Resolution Number 2025-21, Change Order for Advanced Stores Company, Inc., for the Purchase of Automotive Parts, Accessories, and Services for Citywide Fleet Vehicles. Sponsored Chief Procurement Officer Sharice George Depozar. A resolution of Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing piggyback contract with Advanced Stores Company, Inc., DBA Advanced Auto Stores, for the Purchase of Automotive Parts and Accessories, in an annual estimated budgeted amount of $60,000. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, and providing an effective date. Agenda item 9.4, Resolution Number R2025-22, Change Order for Afton Pumps, Inc., for the Purchase of Pumps and Motors for NMB Water Production. Sponsored North Miami Beach Water Director Hamid Nikvah. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing a purchase order with Afton Pumps, Inc., for the sole source purchase of pumps and motors in an estimated budgeted amount of $357,706. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.5, Resolution Number R2025-23, Approving an Agreement with Cooper General Corporation for the Purchase of Radio Consoles with the NMB Police Department. Sponsored Chief Information Officer Ricardo Castillo. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a piggyback contract between the city and Cooper General Corporation for the Purchase of Radio Consoles and Communication, in a budgeted amount of $92,000. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.6, Resolution Number R2025-24, Approving an Agreement with Granger, Inc., for the Purchase of Citywide Facilities Maintenance, Repair, and Operations, MRO, and Industrial Supplies. Sponsored Chief Procurement Officer Sharice George Depozar. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a piggyback con, I'm sorry, a piggyback contract between the city and WW Granger, Inc., for the Purchase of Citywide Facilities Maintenance, Repair, and Operations, MRO, and Industrial Supplies, for an estimated annual budgeted amount of $350,000. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.7, Resolution Number R2025-25, Approving an Agreement with Insight Public Sector for Technology Product and Related Services. Sponsored Chief Information Officer Ricardo Castillo. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a piggyback contract between the city and Insight Public Sector for Technology Products and Related Services, in an estimated annual budgeted amount of $500,000. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.6, Resolution Number R2025-26, Approving an Agreement with Multiple Vendors for the Purchase of Safety Shoes. Sponsored Chief Procurement Officer Sharice George Depozar. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a piggyback contract between the city and multiple vendors for the Purchase of Safety Shoes and Boots, in a total estimated budgeted amount of $125,000. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.9, Resolution Number R2025-27, Change Order for Tropic Fence for Citywide Fence Repairs. Sponsored Chief Procurement Officer Sharice George Depozar. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing a piggyback contract between the city and Tropic Fence, Inc., for the Purchase of Fence Installation and Maintenance Services, in an estimated annual budgeted amount of $80,000. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.10, Resolution Number R2025-28, Approving a Purchase Order with Water Treatment and Controls, Inc., for the Purchase of Various Pumps, Motors, Parts, and Services. Sponsored North Miami Beach Water Director Hamid Nikvah. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing a purchase order with the Water Treatment and Controls, Inc., DBA Water Treatment and Controls, for the Purchase of Various Pumps, Motors, Parts, and Services, in an estimated budgeted amount of $68,287. Authorizing the city mayor or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.11, Resolution Number R2025-29, Authorizing Partnership with the Miami-Dade County Office of Tax Collector and the Clerk of, of the Court and Comptroller of Miami-Dade County. Sponsored Mayor Michael Joseph. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing partnership with the North, I'm sorry, partnership with the Miami-Dade County Office of the Tax Collector and the Clerk of the Court and Comptroller of Miami-Dade County. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.12, Resolution Number R2025-30, Approved Submittal of Evaluation and Appraisal Review, EAR, Letter for the Comprehensive Plan as Required by State Statute. Sponsored Community Development Director Zafir Ahmed. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, accepting and evaluating the appraisal review ear letter in accordance with the Section 163 dot 3191 Florida statutes, and authorizing the transmittal of the letter to the Florida Department of Commerce, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date. Agenda item 9.13, Resolution Number R2025-31, Authorizing the City of North Miami Beach to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Jackson North Hospital to promote joint health and wellness initiatives and to enhance services for the community. Sponsored Mayor Michael Joseph. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Jackson North Hospital to promote joint health and wellness initiatives and enhance services for the community. Authorizing the city manager to negotiate the terms of the MOU for approval by the commission. Authorizing the city manager or designate to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
Next item is, oh, I had a request from the city manager regarding a business tax receipt, right? If you want to...
Yes, sir, thank you. We have one item, a business tax receipt. Seeing that the agenda is going to have some lengthy discussion on some of these items, or potentially, as a courteous, I don't know if there's somebody here from Dean's Gold that's representing them, and if the commissioner would like if they are...
Anybody?
Seeing none, we can just leave it where it stands.
In a, because I want to be pretty, since you gave me an opportunity, like, we have a bunch of appointments, can I get a, since, can we, can I get a motion to approve all the appointments?
Motion?
As a whole?
Second.
Out of, out of order, wait.
Second.
So, wait, do we need a motion to move out of order, or do we, or we can, that's, just from a parliamentarian standpoint? So I motion to move out of order an item, right? Or, or, or section in the agenda?
Then you want to vote on it.
So, can I, can I move the, can I move the appointments?
I make a motion to move the appointments to the beginning.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, let's...
We vote on all of them at once.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, yes, we have a second. Everybody, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? We'll move on, so we can crash that off.
Thank you.
Next item is, we're in a...
So, we're not doing Dean's Gold now?
No, no, it's, because it's...
Okay.
Yeah. No one here?
Move to introduce, ordinance number 2024-16, second reading, abandonment and vacation right of ways and easements.
It's the second reading, so, okay. Do I, where's, who's?
I'm in commotion.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor, we have Assistant Director of Community Development.
The second reading, so you can be brief, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, maybe the attorney should read the title?
Oh, yes, sorry, red line, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, so, City Attorney, please.
No worries, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Agenda item 11.1, Ordinance Number 2024-16, second reading, abandonment and vacation right of ways and easements. Sponsor Community Development, I'm sorry, sponsor Community Development Directors, Zafir Ahmed. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, amending the City of North Miami Beach Code by amending chapter, is that, 17, entitled Streets and Sidewalks by creating a new section entitled 17-7, entitled Abandonment and Vacation of Right of Ways and Easements, to provide uniform procedure for abandonments and vacations of city streets, alleys, easements, and other fee or non-fee property interests of similar character, providing for codification, conflicts, scrivener errors, severability, and providing for an effective date.
And, and Mayor, I'm sorry, Mitchell, before, Mitchell can, can quickly go over, essentially, well, I'll try, and then you correct me. Essentially, this is just putting into policy what is standard praxis for the abatement of alleyways or, or public right-of-way within the city to adjoining property owners. There were two, two things I'd like to bring to the commission for consideration that was requested by your colleague's mayor. One is with regards to section, and I apologize, I just want to make sure I read this right for the record. In section D, titled Procedures, and then number two, titled Application Requirements, and then J, as in Jack, I'm sorry, I, I as in Ivan. It says, "A request petition signed by owners of at least 60% of properties, abutting the portion of the right-of-way proposed to be vacated." Commissioner Smith has asked that we also make sure that we include a language that would say, that as part of the petition, the adjacent property owners be given information on potential tax adjustments and easements needed for utilities to those property owners. And also, Vice Mayor Sue has requested if, instead of 60%, that would be 75% of the abutting property owners. I don't believe any of those requests are substantial in nature, but it's up to you all for consideration. Did I kind of explain?
But, you pretty much wrapped it up, but, City Attorney, does that change any, regarding the recommendations?
They are changes, but I don't believe any of them are so material as to require a second, a new first reading, just for the commission's edification. As long as the topic that's going to be discussed has been fairly noticed, and people have an opportunity to participate, and that there's no change that's been made that would be very detrimental to the public, such that if they'd known about the change, they would have wanted to come and speak, those kind of minor adjustments are typically permitted.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you had a thought?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say that because there's a, there's a financial burden, additional burden for the residents, I think that it would only be fair if more people are in agreement with that. So that's why I added the 75.
So, so I would like the manager to state again, what I want to make sure is, the information required by the owner to do once is voted on, is included in the petition before they sign. I don't want people to knock on their door, and they say, "Hey, we can have the alleyway for land of our own property," and they say, "Oh, my God, where do I sign?" And then they find out later, they have to get permission from the utility company, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want all the information's required to be in the, included on the petition they're signing. And I agree that it should be more, a greater percentage.
Okay, do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve? It's a roll...
Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I think you will need a motion to amend, and then approve.
Move to amend.
So do I have a motion to amend, as amended?
My, yeah, my motion is to amend for 75% or greater, or to sign the petition in order for it to be done, and that everything that is involved in changing it over is done at the, before they sign the petition.
I second.
Does that sign?
Second.
All right, as amended.
As amended, no, somebody has to make a second, and then we have to vote.
Second to the amendment, yes.
Okay, now we have to vote on it.
Okay, now we can, we do...
Motion to approve with amendment.
As amended.
Whether to, no, whether to amend.
Whether to amend.
And if the amendment passes, then you can vote as amended.
Okay, let's vote on that first aspect.
Motion to approve the amendment, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Next, we vote on the ordinance as amended, and that's a roll call vote. Okay, do I have a motion to...
So move.
Oh, he's going to give a presentation?
No.
Manager does.
Do I, do I have a second?
I'm second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the roll call.
Commissioner Shunoff.
Yes.
Commissioner Flori Mon.
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Is it raining? It is, yeah. So we, we, oh, she has, yes, you're right, Commissioner Jean has to be recorded on it when she returns, so we'll just make that notation, Madam Clerk. Now, we...
She has to vote on the amendment, too, that she amended?
No, no, because we, no, because that was on the ordinance itself, as a... No, no, because we, no, because that was on the ordinance itself as amended, she has to vote on it.
Okay.
Eleven point two was pulled, eleven point three was pulled, or ta, pulled, right? We're going on to eleven point four?
Right.
Which is, uh, RFP of the procurement officer's item. Please come on.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right.
Introduce. Resolution number R two thousand twenty-five dash nineteen approving firms responding to requests of qualifications RFQ twenty-four dash zero-two-six SG Recreational Complex Redevelopment Project Phase One.
It was Attorney.
Agenda item eleven point four, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five dash nineteen, approving firms responding to request for qualification RFQ twenty-four dash zero-two-six dash SG Recreational Complex Redevelopment Project Phase One. Sponsor Chief Procurement Officer Sharice George Depuzor. A resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving the qualified shortlisted firms that responded to request for qualification RFQ twenty-four dash zero-two-six dash SG Recreational Complex Redevelopment Project Phase One, developers pre-qualification, and approving their exclusive participation in phase two of the project.
Before the chief procurement officer starts, I want to make, this item, last time, I was the one to pull it because, you know, I just want to give, there was some, some misunderstandings that this wasn't already been out there, that, that the commission didn't put, um, this request out. It did. Um, I'm looking forward to what comes back. This is not a final say. I know this park is favored or seen as a gym to a lot of people in the community and in regards to Snyder Park and, and, uh, and, no, I'm going to go, I'm just, I just want to add that, that little bit of tidbit, but I'm glad that we're finally here and have a robust discussion on it. But before you start, my Commissioner Jean had a thought.
Yes, I remember thinking, Mr. Mayor, there was a period of time when they said that the, um, the land was preserved or some part of some sort of preservation movement or what have you. So I wanted to find out that we do the due diligence from the legal side to ensure that it's not, um, it's, 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 um, ready to be developed and there aren't any restrictions as to relate to the county and whatever designation is on that particular acreage.
Before, before, when you, when you were out, Commissioner Jean, we voted. Oh, I don't know how you want to vote on the...
Yes, it's a yes.
Madam Clerk?
It's a yes vote.
Yes.
So you noted for the last ordinance, she's voting yes. That's what she...
Yes. Thank you for noting.
She was drawing discussion on this ordinance.
Yes. So now it's, um, Chief Procurement Officer, it's your show. Thank you.
But I do want to hear the answer.
I was responding to that.
Yeah.
That, um, thank you, Commissioner, will, as part of the overview that, um, our procurement director will, will speak about, will address that question.
Um, so, good evening, Mayor Commission. To first answer that question, the due diligence has been done for, uh, the partnering agencies, the FDP, FDEP, um, as well as some legal, uh, research to determine that we can move forward with this property in doing a development of a recreational complex. We are keeping it, um, in the realm of being a park and recreation, um, in the same. So we have authority to move forward in that way.
So in that same vein, what is not allowed? Is that something that your presentation will cover as well?
Um, no, not what's not allowed because we have, um, the commission is opined that we are going to move forward in a rec, with a recreational complex. So that's our vision for the open space as well as some recreation. So we're not going to discuss what we can't do, this is where we're going with it.
I, I don't mean to, like, you know...
No, no.
...preclude the conversation, but the reason I'm asking is because the second step is for firms to actually submit thought, ideas, and so forth. So within that context, is there things that, are there things that cannot be done?
Of course.
So that's basically what I want to hear, because I, you know, saying that it's parks or recreational complex, does that not include hotels? Does that not include, what does that include, what does not, that not include?
Okay.
I mean, those are the questions that I have, you know.
Okay. So, um, that information will be disseminated in the next phase of the project to all of the participants. However, um, in the first phase of this project, we did identify what we envisioned the recreational complex, um, being, um, some of the, the must haves in terms of open space, uh, dog parks, art, um, food halls or dining, uh, stadium seating, the whole lot. So that is what the vision is. And so in the creativity part, um, firms will then reimagine that space with those points. We're bringing in, uh, we're tying in the Spanish monastery, our transportation, we're, um, going to tie in somehow, you know, Snake Creek. We want all of those things that are, you know, great benefits to our city tied into this, this comp, this project as well. And then we have, uh, we'll go into some of the things that we want as a city and as a commission, some things like, um, uh, small business participation, uh, within the build, also, um, having small businesses work on, on the site and some of those food halls and such. So those are some things that we're getting to in the second phase of some of those ask or, or must haves in the project.
And that will be part of whatever presentation is submitted by the selected.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's, it's to them to make it as attractive so we, as a commission would choose whichever that particular developer might bring as a P three type of...
Yes, but there are requirements.
So, you know, they're going to try to wow us so it can be inclusive, but I'm sorry, um, Commissioner... No, I'm good.
I wanted to say something, the Commissioner Smith has her hand up.
The right side is always...
Real quickly, right? So I live here, right? I've lived here for over thirty years and my commissioners as well. At what point do we have a say? Is it after the developer spends, you know, millions, whatever, thousands to develop this? Or are we inclusive in this vision? Because in the community as well. So, you know, I hear your vision as a, as a staff, but at what point does our input...
So Commissioner, if you remember, um, a year ago, we held a discussion item in which that kind of vision was discussed. Uh, the commission gave direction to staff to move forward with a, a two-step process. This is step one, in which would bring not only the resurfacing of tennis courts, uh, but repurposing the layout of the ten...
Ten and a half acres.
Eleven, ten and a half acres of the property, to also include pickleball, patel, a pro-shop, um, a dog park, um, the kayak launch, um, and, and other features in which the park would be used not just for someone to come in for thirty minutes, but to maybe spend the day there.
Mr. Manager, before you start, there's a, I just want to clarify for one of my commissioners, a couple of them. What date specific was this brought up back in?
I believe it was, and, and the memo, um, that was attached to the agenda item was on there, it was the February, I think it was twenty-fourth, uh, commission meeting.
February twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject.
Sure.
It's not the, it's not the, um, the qual, the actual project that's the issue, or it's the methodology of how you're gathering the feedback from us. So the directive was to move forward in soliciting, you know, bids or what have you, but the feedback part is, I think, the part that we're all assuming has not been done yet.
Right. So part of that discussion, we, we discussed not limiting what type of projects would come in as long as they're recreational focused and they, and they met certain criterias that we wanted because we, we had discussed and we had said, hey, they might come up with an idea that blows us away that we never thought of. But if we go in saying, hey, we want a two-acre dog park located here, we want this here, we want that there, we want that there, then that's not opening up for that kind of feel. So the intent is, once the projects are, are developed and they're presented to the commission, that now gives us an opportunity to say, hey, this is everything that was presented to the commission, this is how we're going to move forward. There's still a lot between saying, this is our primary project that we want to, to investigate and further negotiate contract, um, details to when that gets approved. It's not an overnight type thing.
Just to, to clarify, I, I think I, I see the thought process for my commission, and correct me if I'm wrong. Now, um, if, if it were to get approved tonight, we go back to a cone of silence?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so when, when the projects come back, are we going to get a list of those proj, they're not going to, like, how's that going to be done, the process, so they would know, under, so, so my colleagues could be edified and, and seeing if it's going to be ranked, or we're going to have like a list of them, and then we're going to take a decision on each, like, make a decision on that?
Absolutely. Um, great question. So once we get all of the, um, the bids back, the project development...
Seven, about seven.
There's six.
Six, six.
Um, that ranking, that discussion of what it is that we like and we don't like comes to the commission. Um, you all are essentially that evaluation, um, um, committee, right? Um, that would require a, a special meeting, um, for the commission because you're going to have six presentations leading up to that. All of those projects, um, are going to be made available to the public, um, in which, because once the, the bids are now in and we put that agenda public, then the cone of silence is removed. So we're able to then have that opportunity, um, and we can even be creative, um, in there in which if, from that special meeting, if you all want to say, hey, we want to narrow this down to three, right? And then have maybe a online survey in which residents can do something, there's a lot of, um, opportunity for that to happen, but I think it's important.
Mr. Manager, I do think it's important, but I, I think what's more important is that you give us more of a space to have this inclusive dialogue. Imagine six people, six firms, creating a creative vision, which is great. However, there's certain elements that we may want to see, which might give a particular firm an edge based on their creativity, where you can have aligned the vision prior so that everybody has a fair playing field on what it should be built on. So that's all I'll say.
I wanted to talk.
Okay. Commissioner, uh, Smucker.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So these six firms, do they know what we can or cannot do there?
Um, yes, in terms of what we're looking for, yes. Now, um, after this is approved, hopefully, um, there's, before the solicitation goes out, um, because this is an exclusive list, we're going to meet, we're going to discuss what it, what our needs are for this project prior to them going back to the drawing board and doing all of their work. Um, it's important to reiterate again what it is we want and what our asks are so they can go back in and provide a, a creative project. So they will know, um, all of the things that, you know, we're not looking for in terms of hotels or mixed use. Um, we've, we've been pretty clear on, um, what our vision is and the, the, the firms that have been selected are well-versed in those type of projects.
Okay. Because I did have someone reach out to me on the list and they wanted to do a hotel, so...
That, that wasn't in the solicitation nor was in that, their response, so I haven't been made aware of that at all. And we'll definitely clarify because that is not an option.
Okay. So when we're in the cone of silence, we can't talk to the residents either, right? Or...
That's true.
That's correct.
Why not just a cone of silence?
You can talk to the procurement director, right?
Of course. Yeah, but, I mean, if the residents want to reach out to us, telling them, asking us what they want, we can't talk to them. But I do agree with Commissioner Jean, um, you know, we, we do, I wish we could have had some community input first before we do something and then we read it.
Well, to, to your, to your, like, to, to the procurement, uh, this is, they're coming up with proposals, we don't necessarily have to, um, decide, we could say, you know what, we want to scrap and not choose anyone.
Right, I mean, it's not costing us.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's...
Something that should be...
No, no, I, I, I understand your standpoint. I, I, I clearly get it, but, you know, the, and I'm not saying this is a futile exercise in going through this process, but I do know that I, I would like to see the vision that, you know, these firms want to bring to the table. I'm not saying that, and I'm, we're not locked in to saying this is what we're going to do. Of course, you know, that's something that we, we have this question on.
But, but at the same time, they can all bring this vision and that's not what we want or the community wants. And then they also spend, it costs them a lot of money as well to, to do all this.
Commissioner Flor, Florhamon, and, and then Commissioner Chernoff, sorry. Commissioner Florhamon.
Oh, I, I see our attorney's hand is up, but I, and I would have...
Just very briefly...
Okay. Uh, and maybe the, the manager can help me, but if, if I'm, and, and I'm, I don't know everything about this because it was approved before we were here. But that said, my understanding, Mr. Manager, is when the second phase solicitation with parameters goes out, because every firm that's responded, I mean, there's not a shortlist here. The six is everyone that responded. And my understanding is that it's going to, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Manager, if I understand correctly, you're not going to recommend one, you're going to pass all six to the commission, is that your intent?
As all the projects with the direction that the commission gave staff last year to move forward with a recreational space for development with a community center, dog park, new courts, and for multiple courts, as well as a kayak launch, um, that is being proposed for all six to develop a project with those criterias. Um, once that is brought back probably ninety days or so, uh, because it is a, a fairly, um, robust, uh, request, all six of those would come back to the commission, and then the commission can either shortlist or pick a project at that, um, special meeting. Um, and then, um, if we shortlist, then that gives us an opportunity, um, to do, be creative and, and get a, a survey, a poll, um, a contest, whatever, whatever it would be, um, with, with the community, they get an opportunity to listen out. It, it can be as creative as, as however the commission wants to kind of, um, narrow that field down, but, um, it's, it's up to you.
But, but my question, Mr. Manager, it's not contemplated that you're going to recommend one or the others?
No, sir. The commission will act as the evaluation committee.
So in, in essence, if I'm, and maybe this will clarify, Mayor, I'm sorry for taking a minute, but, um, ultimately, what's contemplated, regardless of whether all six or you, the commission decides to go further on three or whatever, what's contemplated, if I understand, is really the, the choice, taking into account the specific proposal, the choice is who is going to be the master developer of this recreational complex. Is that correct?
The, the choice takes in not only the, um, development, the financing, um, and the construction and the, um, um, operations of the facility, um, as a whole.
So my understanding, Mayor and, and, and commission, if at the end of that iterative process, the commission selects, in essence, looking at the proposals and what people contemplated, the commission will select a master developer. Once you have done that...
All bets are off.
You're not bound by the specifics of what they propose because what you're doing is you're really saying who is top-ranked, and then you're trying to negotiate with that entity exactly what you want them to do. It may be what they proposed to you, or there may be some piece that somebody else had that wasn't chosen but that you just think was terrific, and you could say, but we want you to include this piece. Now, if they don't want to do that, and they can't be compelled, and you insist on it, you can say ultimately, either, you know, our way or we're going to move on to number two. But ultimately, when you, if I'm correct in what you're contemplating, when they select who the developer will be, that is not the end of negotiating, they're selecting who is top-ranked, and then you have to negotiate a contract. Am I correct on that, Ms. George Depuzor?
Sort of. Um, so the aim, like the manager said, we're going to present, we're going to have, um, special meetings so you guys can just see the design. The proposals are not just based on design because we want them to design, operate, build, finance, and maintain this complex, so it's not just on the pretty design. So when we see the designs and they do their presentations, it would be prudent of us to, at that point, shortlist the firms as well. At that point, per state statute, we're going to go into an interim agreement with a firm. That's when we narrow down the financing a bit, that's when we narrow down the nuts and bolts, what we really want from this project. And... And at that point, if we come up...
Site plan, whatever.
Yes, all of the things. You know, we're weighing risk as well, on both parties. We're taking everything into consideration before we really pull the trigger on the project. We definitely have time, this isn't, we're gonna see them and go, that is not this project. The state statute doesn't allow for that, to be so cut and dry.
Thank you. So, my question was going to be along the lines of some of what's been discussed here, because I know that the county itself has their ordinances, et cetera. You know, we've kind of gone through this before, and there were some concerns about that site, as to, you know, is all of it a park? Is a portion of it a park, and a portion of it is not? Is it all one parcel, one folio number? I don't know. If you guys have those answers, if it's all one folio.
It is.
It is all one folio? And so, and in addition to that, I think that there may be some desire for a hotel, to the degree that perhaps residents may agree to section off a portion for that purpose. I don't know, right? But we...
We can't do that, according to the...
No, unless you have a vote, unless you...
No, it's according to the...
So, is this particular property under that preservation ordinance, where you can't even look at it from the perspective of any mixtures or any development other than recreational?
It is our understanding, yes, with the state, we cannot.
With the county.
With FDP.
Can we get a memo on that, please?
Sure.
Can we get a memo, because we just want to make sure that it's clear where we are? Because I think that was the issue we had last time, is that everyone was clear, this is what we can do, and then we were, you know, quote-unquote, "off to the races," and then, you know, find out that there's a whole lot we couldn't do. And at the end of the day, the most important aspect, the most important part of this, is to make sure that we get use by our residents. You know, I was there this past weekend, you know, and my dog was running up and down, you know, the park, and we were having a good time, and there were a couple of other, you know, dog owners that were there. You know, that's the meetup spot, but there's no, there's no dog bag, no waste bags, there's no walk path, there's no, you see what I'm saying? And so, the utilization of the park is only the tennis players and those who decide that they want to come out there and hang out. So, that's really the most important thing, is to make sure that we get use out of it recreationally. But if there's an opportunity also to combine that with what this city has been needing for so long, perhaps that's something that residents, if they want to explore, can make a decision on. You know, but I just want to make sure, because I'm reading about food concession facilities not exceeding 1,500 square feet. You know, I'm reading about bandstands and bandshells containing less than 1,000 spectator seats, athletic facilities, sports fields, arenas containing less than 3,000 seats. You know, I'm not sure if the people who are submitting have looked into all of that, or if they believe that, you know, their ideas will work for that space. And since we've only considered financial and other aspects of their qualifications, that gets them into round two, you know, but where are they going? With their particular ideas that I'm not sure if any of you guys have seen yet, right? Have you guys seen any of their ideas?
No.
No. So, that's something, I think that's critically important, that they know.
If I may, Commissioner Florhamon, I think what's happening is that those firms believe that we can make the decision about adding a hotel or whatever.
Right.
And we can't, according to the state, we can't.
Well, I'd like to see a memo on what can be or can't be done, with respect to what you're saying. Because, and my thought process was that certain things would have to go through a referendum of some sorts, but if this is preserved land, similar to Gurnold's Park, right? Where you can't do anything, then it's good to know, it would be good to know that through a memo. I'm gonna come to a close on this particular comment, Mr. Mayor. Because you mentioned something about cone of silence, which I think is very important.
This is the perfect opportunity to have some of the potential bidders here, to have some of our forethought.
Because the manager and the attorney is saying that we're the ones making the decision. And so, if we're the ones making the ultimate decision, then how does that work with a cone of silence? Do we get to review? Do we have time to review, or is it only before us, when it comes before us, during commission meeting?
We'd have to workshop it.
Typically, our cone of silence is lifted at the point that the administration makes a recommendation of some sort to the commission, and it becomes the province of the commission.
Right.
So...
So, that would mean that, at that juncture, we would lift a cone of silence to have those special meetings? Because we would have presented those to you all?
Well, all six?
Well, just to...
Or the special meetings, special presentation?
To be clear, like, right now, we have six.
Yes.
They're gonna, for them to go back into a cone of silence, even though we're gonna be the ultimate decision-makers, I mean, do they have to go back to the cone of silence, or they cannot? Can they just not come up with their proposals and just submit it to us? Like, I'm just...
When they've all submitted, understand, when all six have submitted, the managers indicated, they're not gonna be the ones to narrow it to three.
Okay, so, once the submission timeline is open, then we call it...
Once it's submitted back to you...
Within that timeline?
And the recommendation from the management, from the manager's office, is simply, here are the all of it.
That's when the cone of silence is lifted.
That the cone of silence.
And typically, that will not be immediately when we receive the bids, because staff does have to go to make sure that the bids are compliant with it. So, that might take a little bit, but once that is done, we would release that to everybody.
Commissioner Chernoff.
Okay. What I understand was, we had an RFP that was sent out a long, RFQ, a long time ago, a long time ago, specifying all these things that Cherie said, which is all the parameters that somebody can make proposals. What we're voting for tonight is to approve the, all of them that made a submission, saying, okay, go forward, show us what you have. And I'd like to make sure that we have a short window for them to come back to us, because this has been going on since the two years since I've been back. I've asked for it, and I was upset with you last meeting, because you wanted to, whatever. But that's another month that it stays behind.
No, no. Each time... You're incorrect, Commissioner. I think the point is that although there was some discussion about what would be allowed, the point of the RFQ is who you're picking here is, in essence, a master developer to carry out what the vision, so there's been some statement from the city about what the vision would be, but what they've actually submitted so far are not proposals. They've submitted their experience...
Their criteria, right.
No, no, their experience.
Their qualifications. That's what it was.
For, that's why it's RFQ. Their, what would make them a good...
Fit for us.
To do this for you, but now, we're gonna be first telling them in a little more detail, this is the kind of project, use, put your thinking cap on, be creative, but this is what our vision is. And they've only been told that in really, kind of in passing, because otherwise, you can't say, well, what's your experience in doing this? But it's only been, what are your qualifications? And the manager finding, and the procurement officer finding, they all have substantial qualifications, that's why they're all getting passed in the next level.
Right, I understand, and that's what I'm saying, is now, let's let them make proposals, so we can see them and discuss them.
Well, the silence is lifted, we're able to, they're hearing a lot of our thoughts.
No, once they get it back, then we discuss it.
No, no, but right now, it's lifted, they're hearing our thoughts right now, in real time.
But I do have, I'm gonna go... Can we make a request?
Yeah, you may, you may request.
As far as the cone of silence, are we able to, are we able to address that? After Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith, sorry.
Manager, I think you mentioned a possibility of an online survey. Can we get that started, so by the time...
With all due respect, Commissioner, there's nothing. I don't have a project, I don't have a visual concept. We can say, we're looking for a dog park, tennis courts, pickleball, patel, a community center.
Can we ask the residents?
But...
Can we ask the residents what they would like?
I think we can do that on the second phase, but Commissioner Smith, please.
Thank you, thank you, because it's so simple. Simple, all this conversation. We're voting on people that are qualified. I agree, there's a ying and a yang to what Commissioner John is saying. Because she's right in the fact that, and what Commissioner Smucker said, what about the residents? What about what we want? What this concept is, developers that are in this field, that are financially capable, will submit to us maybe an idea we didn't even think of, but we're not gonna use him. We're gonna use somebody else, but we like that idea, let's incorporate that. So, I say we vote on this. I say we let it ride, vote on this, 90 days is fine. They have to have time to sit with their team, 90 days back.
I have a question about...
Wait, just a second, just a second. And then, when it comes back in the cone of silence, exactly what the mayor said. If you don't like any of them, we start again. But I don't want to give them any ideas. This is their field, let them give us ideas. If it doesn't incorporate in what our thoughts are, if it doesn't include what the residents' thoughts are, we'll go back to the drawing board.
Do this.
Okay, the other thing I want to say before it even starts, and the public hates you, and I've had so much wrath, Mr. Manager, could you please, before it comes to us, put curtails where on curtails need to be made? Because there's so much that went into years of planning with the community center that went from $13 million to $25 million, without it stopping before it even came to us. So, that would be my wish, my, I'm entering that wish now, that it's from management, before it comes to us, to be the bad guys. We have management to control that. And I'm bringing it now, because it's gonna come up again, and again, and again, and I promise you, I don't have the heart for the heart rock to walk and take four years of the public chastising us. Let's get what we're gonna do, and I appreciate that timing. That was my direction to the management, thank you.
Final thought.
On this item, yes, I just wanted to ask, well, through the mayor, is there, is there... Is it prudent, or can we suspend the cone of silence for a week after this, or no? Is that something that is possible?
I don't think we can, because it is, it's an ordinance, and it's not only our ordinance. Our ordinance has to comply, that's an area where Dade County creates. And if our ordinance, I mean, in theory, we could go back and amend our ordinance for some, in some way, to allow that, that, by the way...
Manager has a thought.
60 to 90-day process.
Because I guess, let me make sure I'm clear, and, oh, he has a response, okay.
Yeah, so, to the attorney's point, the cone of silence takes, comes into effect when the solicitation is now advertised, right? And you all get that. This is not going to be advertised tonight.
So, there is a separate advertising for the RFP?
For the RFP to this group, absolutely, yes.
And when do you plan on doing that?
Phase two, in the memo for the advertised date, would be a February, March, 2025 timeframe. So, we do have the opportunity...
We're in February now.
Right. We have two weeks, and we have some time in March. We want to make sure that our scope, that goes out and everything, is going to be nailed down, as what we've talked about. We'll also do a pre-proposal meeting, and then the solicitation essentially goes out with, hopefully, receiving bids in May.
So, a formal solicitation will be advertised, it's exclusive, so that means it's not going out to the world. It's only going to these six firms. That will be in March.
So, that addresses the concern that I had with the request to cone of silence, is because these folks want to talk. They have, they want to express their, you know, desire for that particular parcel, and we need time to receive that information, especially if, I believe, you said that you're gonna probably give us top-three recommendations, once the solicitation goes out? Is it all six?
All six.
It's all six.
All six from staff, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All six, okay.
Okay, okay, so, okay, Commissioner John.
A month, thank you so much.
All right, Commissioner John, I get final thought.
Can we get a better timeline? So, for example, you say March, right? It's gonna be out again, so that means to Commissioner Florhamon's point, in that three-week span, while you're getting it together, technically, the firms can reach out to whoever they want to get ideas, right?
Correct.
Now, once those packages are in, what does it look like? Does it look like, when we get to the special meeting, that's when we are now seeing these six presentations? Is that what it is?
Yes, because what happened...
It'd be the minute when the managers...
He says he's not making a recommendation to us, so we're making it.
So, that is correct.
Saying the same things differently.
Once the solicitation closes...
We're saying the same thing differently.
Once the solicitation closes, and we do our evaluation, we can, the cone of silence can be lifted once we present those to you guys. We're presenting those to you and recommending that we're moving forward with them, that we can present them. We're scheduling the special meetings after that time.
Okay, the advantage is, is this, right? Of course, if you're one of these competitive firms, you're not gonna show your hand to everybody else. When, everybody's hand will be showed on when you open it up, so that's the real reason. They can still interact with us, but they're gonna show, they're gonna show their hand when it opens up, when the cone of silence is lifted, right?
They just have to make sure that the bids are responsive and responsible, that they've, if they're, you know, if they're required to demonstrate, for instance, that they have the financial strength to carry this out, and one of them doesn't do that, or it looks shaky, or they're not clear that they have the ability, they might get disqualified, but everybody that does what they're supposed to, the recommendation will then come from the procurement office and the manager, these are all qualified proposers, six of them, or it might be four of them, or five, but everybody that does, and when they send the memo, this, we've looked at it, these all qualify, in your hands.
The other question is this, what's the timeframe between the special meeting and what you just mentioned? It could be a month, it could be two months after, right?
It could be a month, then we have a special meeting. We already have a date certain for those types of meetings, this would be certainly one of them.
I think a timeline would be good for us to have, to know, okay, for example, the bid is closed now, they're gonna, you guys are gonna review them. In two weeks, three weeks, we have a special meeting, versus...
No, no, well, no, well, it's like...
You can set that, when you see what you get, if it's something that you think you can review in two weeks, you could say, get to that special meeting. If you look at it and say, I'm gonna need a month on this, you can say, set it in a month. That's, it's your meeting, it's up to you, whenever you want to schedule it.
So, Commissioner...
Here's the thing, how it works here with the city is, oh, we'll have a special meeting, once we can get it together, and then what happens, it never happens.
Well, okay, so, just so we can, so, we can...
So, to answer, in January, the timetable that we provided, the tentative dates, had phase-two advertising February or March. We're saying it's gonna be in March, if it approves tonight. Pre-proposal meeting that we'll have for this will essentially be in either March or early April, depending on the date that it's actually advertised. We're then, by state statute, we can have a solicitation open for about 120 days. I think we're recommending 90, so we're looking for May of 2025. Staff will then, in May of 2025, qualify the bids that we receive, and then you would receive a memo ending the cone of silence. We're anticipating that either May or June of 2025, for you to receive that. There's six, these are pretty lengthy type of presentations or bids that we get, so it's not something that can just be done in a week, so that's why we are saying June. From there, we can hope to schedule, and we can just use the backup... Um, from there, um, we can hope to schedule and we can just use the backup June date.
That would be it.
For, for the commission, which is the Thursday after the commission, um, or the week after, um, for, for the special meeting in which you can have all six. That would be the meeting in June. If we need a second meeting, uh, we can then, at that meeting, either table or, or, um, select a date in July, so that you all can have that in July. Um, then if the commission narrows it down for, um, for review, for further review or whatnot, we would just take the cues on what the commission wants at that time period.
Okay, Commissioners, um, uh, Vice Mayor, you have one final thought. And I know Commissioner Chernoff wants to. I have one, one last thought by Commissioner Smucker. So, uh, Vice Mayor, can you brief?
Okay, um, so first of all, I think before the cone of silence is put in place, whatever Commissioner Smucker was thinking, I think, is a valid point that we should probably get the sound from the, um, the community. But what I want to be clear about when the proposal being sent, it's like, you know, I can imagine like the most beautiful thing, right? And of course, it wouldn't be financially feasible. So with, all of the proposals are going to come in as what they had designed. And the funding and all the financials are all going to be laid out, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, Vice Mayor.
All right.
They can come, um, they can come up with, um, for example, if part of the park feature that they want to include is to build the world's first urban largest waterfall, um, in the world, on that property, they would have to be able to show not only the design and the conceptual, but the financial aspect, that they can afford to build it, they can afford to maintain it, and how that's going to be serviced on a day-to-day. So all of that type of information as part of their bids would have to, now, if they propose that marvelous waterfall, that will be the new wonder of the world, but then there's no idea of how it's going to be constructed or how it's going to be funded, then that essentially to you all kind of says, this person doesn't know what they're doing. Um, so all of that, whatever they want to propose, however grander, whether it's a $200,000 project construction build or a $100 million construction build, it is up to them to tell the city how they are going to fund that, build it, maintain it, and what kind of length of, um, times that they will need in order to make sure that it is appropriate for that build.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, so, so let's just say that at some point, the community comes out and says that they, everybody wants, um, let's say like those where you can, there used to be one at Gulfstream where you could like.
Skateboard.
No, not skateboard, but like ride a wave, like.
A wave machine?
A wave machine.
Oh, you want to have one of those?
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making this up for. So let's just say it's, every, the residents come back and say, this is what we want. Now that, now these firms have to go and change the plans based on what the residents want. So this is why I think we need input from the residents to let the firms know what the residents want as well.
May I interject on that one? Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Um, I think that we should lay everything out of our requirements and what we want to all the designers now. What happens is they're going to propose something, give the financials, and then we're going to, no, and then we're going to switch out. No, we want this one to be that, this one to be that, then the financials change. Like what I'm trying to say is like, whatever we want as a requirement that we want them to put in and is like, you know, it's legal and all the due diligence is done for it, like just get that in, and then like whatever creative creativity they want to put into the project, they can put it in after that.
Right, but we need to discuss this with the residents as well because this, this park is not just for the seven of us.
I understand, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And even though we are here to speak for them, but we also need to listen to them.
Yes.
So I, I feel that before these firms start doing things, and then the residents come back and it's nothing like what these firms are, are designing, then the, the financial burden is on them as well because it's costing them money to, to do this in the first place, the architecture.
That's why I was saying that like before it gets advertised in March, like let's get all the information that we need. Or if you'd like the advertisement to, you know, that's why I mentioned that, like, I agree with you on that.
This manager, Commissioner Smith.
I just want to say two things. One is I want to make clarity on the fact that you said a golf shop and this. So commercial-wise, is there a certain percentage that can be commercial? Because it has to be a recreational area from the county. So please bring that back as well. Because a golf pro shop might be recreational, but it's definitely commercial. So we have to see what's.
We'll provide, we'll provide clarification to the commission.
Thank you. The second thing I want to say is understanding what Commissioner Smucker's saying and Vice Mayor's saying, and even Commissioner John. The thing that I'm sitting here listening to, what if we want the wave machine? And we want splash pools? But the, the professionals that do this for a living have to make it feasible that that would bring enough money to sustain them. So your wants may be a very big desire from the community, but it's not, it's not sustainable. So let's let, again, back to the original, making a motion and let's vote on six, I make the motion to vote on it, that there are six plans, let them bring it back.
It's a roll call, all right, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Florimond.
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Definitely yes.
Commissioner Smucker?
No.
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Passes 6-1.
All right, next item is business tax receipts.
Before we get there, Mr. Mayor.
11.5.
Oh, 11.5? Oh, 11, I'm sorry, 11.5. Um, can you read, um, the title, um, City Attorney?
Yes.
Oh, do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
11.5, I didn't have that.
Black and Beach.
I didn't, I, I didn't have that in my packet.
The Black and Beach?
Do I have to vote on it?
You don't have to vote on it, but, I mean, it was there.
11.5.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
It's on the agenda, yeah, 11.5, um, can you, can you read it in, um, City Attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Agenda Item 11.5, Resolution Number 2025-32, Approving Work Order Number Five and Authorizing the Issuance of a Notice to Proceed Relating to Work Order Number Five to Black and Beach Corporation to Provide Ongoing Program Management and Staff Augmentation. Sponsored North Miami Beach Water Director, Hameed Nikvane.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment on this item?
Uh, before, yes.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, this particular item, I did mention during my, during my comments earlier, I think that, um, we, we've been talking about work orders probably for the last five, six years, uh, prior to bringing back our water utility. And since then, we're now on Work Order Number Five with, uh, this particular firm requesting $2.387 million. About half a million of that is, um, in case they need more money, um, so they won't have to come back. Um, we, we just brought on CIP, a person with CIP, uh, right, Mr. Manager? I think that's for, also the water utility, right? Um, so thank you for doing that, uh, kudos to you for doing that. I think that we need to kind of forecast and see how we're going to.
We, no, we did. We, we already introduced, he just was giving a pre.
Right.
No, yes, but.
Right, so, um.
You want to allow him to, to speak before you have your additional?
Well, well, I'm, I'm just going to make my, maybe you can answer some of them while you're giving your presentation. Um, you know, but honestly, with this particular, with this work order, um, you know, I think this is our opportunity if we want to try to save some money to do it. And, um, you know, my proposal would be, um, to do 60 days, um, on this particular item until we fully flush it out. Um, and so, but I want to hear what they have to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, please, please, uh.
If I may, um, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Florimond. So, um, Hameed will, will present the item, but that is the intent and direction that Commission had given to staff, um, is to, um, start winding this down. And Task Order Five is in, in line with the five-year work program that's coming to a close. Um, this has been taken into review, um, and, and I'm very proud of Hameed, um, in which he was taking a look at what our capabilities are and how much we can continue to bring in-house. And that is why you're seeing a huge reduction from Task Order Four into Task Order Five. Um, this is also the last opportunity with the task order, um, as this closes, um, out the, the CIP program. Um, but Hameed will go into details, um, with that as, as we explore that. But that is the absolute intent, Commissioner Florimond.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, um, and I'm looking forward to hearing it because I don't see it in the supporting documents. Um, maybe I just missed something here, but.
Please, Director, go ahead.
Thank you, please.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry. I didn't finish reading the body. Oh, please, go ahead, City Clerk. I mean, see, attorney, City Attorney. No worries, and, and actually, that, that's, that's my fault, I apologize. Go ahead. So, uh, Agenda Item 11.5, Resolution Number 2025-32, Approving Work Order Number Five and Authorizing the Issuance of a Notice to Proceed Relating to Work Order Number Five to Black and Beach Corporation to Provide Ongoing Program Management and Staff Augmentation. Sponsored North Miami Beach Water Director, Hameed Nikvane. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, Approving Work Order Number Five, Authorizing the Issuance of a Notice to Proceed Relating to the Work Order Number Five to Black and Beach Corporation to Provide Ongoing Program Management and Staff Augmentation in an amount not to exceed $2,387,892. Authorizing the City Manager or Designee to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. All right, so when I came in the office, I, there was a proposal in my, you know, uh, table, $3.4 million from Black and Beach. That, previous work order, work order four was about four, approximately $4 million. So my task was clear, you know, you need to consider reviewing that and then quickly come up with some resolution because we need to have a business continuity at the same time as well. So I've been through the exercise of extensive negotiation with Black and Beach, considering all our staff capacity and the status of all projects. And we were able to lower it down and, uh, negotiate it to, uh, roughly about $2.5 million. And then we consider factoring on the second round of negotiation, to your point, Commissioner Florimond, uh, consider the new CIP department. Knowing that that new CIP department is going to be fully staffed maybe six months from now, by the time they, you know, advertise some position and then become fully functional. So I consider that as part of the project and program to reduce the level of effort provided by Black and Beach after October. By then, we're hoping that, uh, CIP department is going to be fully functioned, have a good understanding about all projects. And also, I can transfer some of the knowledge from the program to the staff and then pick up the project and handle, uh, the project and execution. Most of the effort that you're seeing on this proposal, as you can see here, it's divided in three sections, pre-construction, program management, and construction management. About 80% of the level of effort that you're seeing right now is towards construction. So I reduce most of their activity on pre-construction because most of our project has been designed, there is no longer needed. Program management is going to be reduced as well. So the goal is to maintain and manage and finish our project. We've been through the reduction of over 60% compared to what's been in place in Work Order Five. We cut about $2 million. We're going to authorize and we are asking for authorization from the Commission for $1.7 million. And then if, if we need to expand, we can authorize the change based off your, you know, based off the Commission direction. But this is a package, this is best we can do to maintain and make sure we have, uh, you know, maintain our obligation to the fee alone as well. So that's all about.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner.
Read that.
Oh, sorry, I can't zoom it.
Commissioner, um.
I'm wearing glasses and I can't read it.
Commissioner Florimond.
Thank you, thank you so much. You mentioned that you expect, what, what is the date that you expect that your CIP would be able to fully take over?
Uh, CIP not necessarily is going to fully take.
Together, um, reorganization of CIP programs and departments. Um, essentially what we have done right now is we moved our public works, CIP staff and, um, members, um, of our internal CIP program at Water into essentially creating this new organization. That's not good. It's not a good year to fly. Um, and so, and so, um, that is now being put together. Um, we are anticipating additional hires and additional services going in for additional engineers and so forth. So as those come in, that starts allowing us to continue to ramp up, um, the CIP, both for Water and for, um, the city.
So, um, so I want to, I want to encourage you guys to have that plan back to us as soon as possible. Um, and I need to know whether or not that's 60 days or 90 days that you're going to have a plan to show us exactly how we reach that October, um, timeline.
We, Commissioner, we're not targeting October. You know, big portion of their level of effort is, is inspection, uh, construction inspection as well. So we may take over the construction management aspect of some of the project that are, are in progress. But we still need to maintain the day-to-day, you know, inspection, which we don't have that capacity right away in our staff.
Okay, so here, here's, here's the ask, what, what, and I'm sorry to, um, didn't mean to cut you off. Here, here's the, um, see, so my responsibility up here is to make sure that we get, we, we get to a point where we're fully staffed, right? And to make sure that as much as we possibly can, that NMB employees are doing the work. You said October, that's what you said. Then I said, okay, well, you know what, show me how we get there. Then you said we're not going to be fully able to do everything in October, which is, which is fine if you show me how we get to the point where we are fully able to do it on our own, right? So whatever that date is, we need to know what it is. And we need to see that plan within the next 60 days.
Yes, sir.
Right, to entice them to do that as quickly as possible.
Which is end of the term of this contract, which is five years.
Sorry?
End of the term of this, the contract is five-year term with two more renewal available. So we're not asking for renewal and we're just trying to make sure we complete all of that.
No, no, that's not what he's talking about, Hameed. I understand, you're looking, you're looking for the reorganizational, um, how the new CIP, um, that we've been discussing for, um, from the budget aspect, um, we're reorganizing all of the master plans so that we can bring to you all to see how we're going to do additional funding for that as well, how the organization for that department is going to look.
So are you able to get that in 60 days, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so can we, so can we do this? So 60 days is $299,111. So can, can we do, um, can we do, um, the, that amount to sustain, 300,000, to sustain them for the next 60 days? At that time when they will come and request the remainder of these funds, that presentation will be ready to show us how we.
Those, those functions, um, are not.
Can't be bifurcated that way?
Right. This, this task authorization is overseeing actual ongoing.
No, no, go ahead, go.
Explain to us how it breaks down, because you're not going to use all this money in the next 60 days. So tell me the next 60 days, how much money?
He wants to have a holdback to a degree.
Correct.
That's what he wants.
Right.
Uh, Commissioner, um, that's what I assume he wants. There has to be a certain holdback, and then, and then, so there's an incentive that what he, what, you know, as a Commissioner, if we were to vote for it, we would get that information back at a time certain.
Right.
So what would be that amount?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I, I know, I understand, what I'm, what I'm trying to explain is, as we're reorganizing, we're, we're essentially creating a new department within the city. Okay, um, and so we're moving and we're looking to hire engineers, construction managers, and so forth. Um, this task authorization is ensuring that we complete the CIP projects that are currently ongoing, right? So I can bring back to you what that reorganization plan for this new department looks like and how that's going to, um, function for the city as we continue to move forward. But to say that we'll have this entire department up and running with everything that we need within 60 days.
Look, there's an amount, and you said it before, is it what, half a million dollar?
300,000.
How much, well, no, 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 what's that extra month? They, they have above. They don't need, that's, that's if they need it.
Correct.
So if you want to hold that back until, because you say you're going to have that information within 60 days. Once we get that information, then in essence, that holdback, I guess he would, that we could hold.
Yeah, but we, but we're still, we're doing 1.7. I think we should do an, we should do a figure, maybe it might not be 300,000, but it's certainly not the full 1.7. You see what I'm saying? Because in the next 60 days, there's no way they can tell me that. Because in the next 60 days, there's no way they can tell me that. One moment, sir. In the next 60 days, there's no way you can tell me that you're going to utilize 1.7. That's not, that's not going to.
That's not how it is.
So tell me how it is, and tell me what the number is for the next 60 days.
On Work Order Four, they came with nine full-time employee. Right now, we reduce it to four only, all right, five only on the proposal, all right? So every single day, they're going to be full-time onsite and report to me and the department and manage all our active projects. So if I want to go with 300,000, let's say for two months, right, I should have ready plan, you know, for Day 61 to pick up and roll the ball and make sure all the project is, you know, successfully completed. Now, we are transitioning, and we're reducing tremendously their level of involvement and effort, you know, compared to the previous Task Order, all right? To make sure we successfully complete all of our project on time and within the obligation that we have as far as, you know, the fee alone as well. So.
You mentioned a very valid point. Day 61, so I understand and I agree with you. So perhaps we give you 60 days to come back with the plan, but 90-day allotment so that you have enough time in between when you present this plan and asking us for additional funds so that you won't have to stop immediately after that 60-day point. So if you do it, if you do it in that, in that case, it's.
Well, make the motion.
Yeah, so the 90-day allotment.
Well, make the motion.
Okay, so I make a motion.
How much is a 90-day allotment?
So the 90-day, hold on a sec. I mean, you got to do 1.794671.
Can I say something while he's looking for? I think the purpose of the conversation, you know, I like to delve into it much stronger than just here. But the purpose of the conversation is because Black and Beach, they oversee and they make sure the project's being done.
Yeah.
And it's a lot of money per hour for this man and the man under him, et cetera. And that has been a sore in our sides because in-house, we can control it too, we can do it better, and so the weeding off of it becomes imperative. And to vote for the whole thing, I like very much what the commissioner is suggesting, that we do it in segments.
But wait, for a point. They have a contract with us.
No, but that's what they're trying to do, is extend the contract. We don't have to.
No, this is not renewal, I believe, you know.
That's why I have to read it at home.
This is a year of five of the contract.
Commissioner Floramon, do you have?
So the number is 448, so in essence, $450,000.
So, do you want to make the motion so we can have a discussion on if that's the case?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve $450,000, which is about 90 days, you know, worth of funds for this work order, and then in 60 days for staff to come back to us with their plan to basically wean off of this consulting with Black and Beach.
All right, I second that. I can, right? I can.
Yes, you can.
Do we have any discussion on?
I have a discussion.
Ms. Flora, yeah?
Okay, so I wanted to ask about the continuity factor. Like you mentioned, you came in, you saw the initial work order, you said, okay, you know what, we're going to see what we can save, right? So you brought it down to this number based on that. The question to the manager is, have you, how many people have you hired for the CIP? And was that in the previous budget?
In the budget, we have already existing employees that are within the Public Works Department that oversee CIP. Those employees are shifted over into the, essentially, the new CIP department, okay? From the Water Department, we have reallocated, I think it's two or three positions with regard to construction management, the, essentially, the director position and the engineer, I think it's an engineer one, that goes into that CIP department as well. As that gets built out and we're able to organize that department and we can fill any of those vacant positions, I think there's currently two or three.
It's two, engineer one and construction manager are vacant.
Construction manager and an engineer one that are currently vacant that we would do a recruitment for. Those would help, again, building out that department. I never foresaw us having a 30-member department in CIP that would take on all design aspects, that would take on all construction inspection or anything like that, but, you know, that's definitely a direction that the city can go in, and we would have to budget for something like that.
I mean, but that's, I think that's the point of Commissioner Floramon, is that the 60-day plan shows us a flow of how it's going to be restructured. That's also going to affect the budget, the budgeting cycle for us, right?
Of course.
So creating a new department or repurposing employees, I think that's something that we should also be privy to. How you're restructuring that department so that we can, okay, we can know that, that you're restructuring it from current employees instead of just not knowing. Because my question too is, how will we know, and I think we spoke about that during the briefing, that the level of experience is there to easily face? To your point, we'll still have consultants as part of the equation, but when you bring on new people, they're not always just ready to hit the ground running. So how does that work with us really being self-sustaining? I'm not seeing the picture yet.
She wants to know how we're going to phase in everyone.
To your point, to what you're, because you haven't shared really numbers with us, or, you know, all these things are important.
And Commissioner Jean, that's why we come up with this plan, you know, to make sure we have good plan in place and consider the new hire by the time they get up to speed. Plus, our staff are, you know, working hard on all other active projects that we have. You may not see it on the Capitol, but in our operating, we have R and R, and there are a lot of projects that are heavily involved. And I only have one engineer, two, and construction manager, you know, vacancies. So we're hoping to form that new department so we can utilize it with more competency while we're, you know, progressively completing all this project. And that's the goal.
Because we're adding a lot of new employees, new positions, new, in a sense of repurposing, but those same people are also doing other things as well. So, you know, how do you, how far do you stretch your team and still be effective? That's like.
In this plan, we have not added anything in Water, you know, specifically as far as positions. In fact, we're transitioning to form the new CIP department, to develop that department to focus on our project. So we're not adding anything. We have some vacancies, but we tremendously reduce the level of effort from consultant. So I just want to make sure we are in the successful path not to impact any of our project to the point that we're getting concerned, then I have to pull my staff from other active project on operation and ask them, you know.
We're not, we're not adding additional work to staff. These are all staff that were already dedicated to CIP projects.
Commissioner Smucker before, because Vice Mayor had a one last, I had a thought before, because Commissioner Smucker has a, no, no, go ahead, go ahead, please.
All right.
You're next, because I didn't want to.
No, so I wanted to ask, like, this actually was negotiated down from about almost $5 million to 1.7, is that correct?
3.6 million previously. Work Order Four was 3.97 million.
Okay, it was 3.97.
Yeah, almost 4 million, now down to 1.7.
Great job. No, I mean, I understand certain things, like, for example, we don't have the manpower or the specialty to be doing certain things. So we couldn't, I noticed that you're weaning off a lot of, you know, a lot of Black and Beach's expertise, and you're creating that in-house. Okay, I think that's something that we're all concerned about because, because Black and Beach is expensive. So we, I'm looking at a queue right now. So, yeah, so I like that, that we are weaning off them, and is there a way that you could trim this and make this even more, like, in-house?
As we progress, we might, but I just want to make sure we're, you know, secured and we have a good plan in place, you know, for the project. That's why we developed, you know, contingency plan in place as well, in case we need to ramp it up.
So you're 500 grand, right?
I've been through all this, and I've been here for a month and a half, so I consider all the staff capacity, experience, level of experience we have, what's being completed, what's active. So this is, at this point, this is best I could, I could have done.
Mayor, Commissioner, and we'll make sure as part of that 60-day, I don't believe, but I'll have procurement confirm, I don't believe we've ever maxed out the task authorizations that were authorized.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Smucker.
All right, so, so we actually did this when, the four of us here, you guys weren't on the commission, but the four of us here voted to bring back the water plan to North Miami Beach, to us. We gave them six, we gave the city six months, and we did it, I believe it was in less than six months.
Record time.
Yeah, so it can be done.
Herculean task.
So where there's a will, there's a way.
And you, as you mentioned, Commissioner, at the time, that was the right decision because you guys transitioned from.
We save a lot of money.
And a lot of the.
Project has been.
And nobody died, like some people said.
And, you know, the world didn't end. And also, the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what I wanted to say is that a lot of the employees actually left. They didn't stay, they went with Jacobs. So it's not like all the employees stayed here and so, but we still did it, and I'm sorry that I interrupted.
Okay, so, so we got a, we got a motion?
He was talking, he was.
No, no, I know, I know. But just, you got, you have a motion?
May I add to?
Yes.
Okay, just.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Not to contradict or to, just to add to that, I think that, remember that the cause of us actually outsourcing to begin with from my, from my inquiries around town, I found that like there were neglected, you know, facilities.
Ooh, that's a third rail.
It was run.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Well, I mean, so, so there has been, there has been conversation about.
It was done purposely.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Yes, yes, I agree, I agree.
Vice Mayor, there was an agenda back then.
No, well, let's, I wasn't.
I know you weren't, I know, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
But my point is to say that when we took it back over, a lot of our employees left, right? So there is a period of time that we have to endure, but I do agree that it has been way too long that we haven't had, you know, the bulk of our people in-house and only maybe, you know, approaching Black and Beach or other similar companies, like occasionally for those specialties. So I think that the 60 days, I think, is a fair amount, but I do believe that the 400,000 is too low.
Well, I, the 400,000 is actually 90 days. So it allows them 60 days to come back.
450,000.
450, I'm sorry, thank you. It allows them to come back in 60 days with the required information, and then so that we can vote at that time to further extend, further extend. But it gives them 90 days in total, but 60 days to come back with the information.
We have a motion in a second. Can we call the vote?
Thank you.
So I'm calling the vote, so.
Wait, I was going to say that, can we adjust that 450?
So wait, so you.
Adjusting it.
That's what I'm saying, I said, I agree with the 60 days and the 90.
So what amount, what amount, what do you want to?
I'm thinking of, like, I think we want to.
You have to make a motion for what number you want and see.
Yeah, exactly. To see if he would admit.
But I just, I just wanted to clarify, because your, your, your statement was, you didn't think 60 days was enough.
No, no, I said 60 days is a good idea, but I think 450 is too low.
And it's 90 days for 450.
Right.
Correct, which is even.
No, 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 but that's the amount. That's what the amount is.
What I'm saying, the amount is too low, whether it be 60 days or 90 days.
But if I may explain the logic behind that, it's, it's.
Yes, to come back for more approval.
No, not only that, but what I'm saying is it covers.
The reason why he came up with that amount, it fits to the timeline, basically, right?
Correct, that's, that's, that's basically.
It's not arbitrary, it's not an arbitrary amount, it's sticking to the schedule.
It was mathematical.
He's good at that.
He's good at that.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Can we all, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed. Okay, next item.
Could I just say something about?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
We're not done yet.
I just want to say one thing.
Go ahead.
To the staff, I hope you're hearing us, because this has been going on the two years that I'm on here. So I just want to make sure staff is hearing that this whole, every time we see it, it brings up a red flag. Thank you.
But what you're chastising them for is, this is part of a contract that came before us. That's what nobody's realized.
I mean, no, well, Black and Beach.
They have a contract with us for X amount per.
I'm not denying they have a contract, but this has always been a sour pill when it comes to Black and Beach.
Oh, yeah, no.
Because we, we had a deal with that for, I mean, for a long.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
But we didn't have.
I'm disagreeing with, that's a bill that we have to pay, whether you look at it or not.
The work hasn't been, the work, the work hasn't been performed. That's the reason why it's negotiated and brought to us for us to approve it.
And, and they, they gave us a price. Am I wrong? They gave us a price, and now we're adjusting the price. Why, why are we adjusting the price when we had a price and it wasn't enough? So they're, they're coming to us for a reason. If they had a contract, we had to pay, they wouldn't be in front of us, Jay. They would be, I mean, Commissioner Chernoff, they're in front of us because they need more. And the thing that is, is they keep digging for more and more and more, and real fast, because the mayor will definitely give me the side eye.
No, 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 no.
Real fast.
I'm there packing it just about.
Vice Mayor, I just want to say, we were promised, and I did a no vote on a promise, that we were going to save nine, $7 million a year. That was the promise, and we had all the liability, and we had all the risk, and we couldn't afford to keep it up, and guess what? None of that was true. It cost us, not only did it cost us a fortune to get it back, it cost us the additional $9 million.
And litigation.
So, you know, and really and truly, I'm sounding harsh, but I have to share with staff that I love, with the manager that is trying each and every way to make sure we're all happy, that this is such a thing that our antenna has to go up. Our antenna has to go up because we've been burdened before. I will save the public of the old Woody throwing the chocolate at the first fiancee. I will say that story for my third or fourth time repeating it, but it wasn't about this issue, it's about all the things that happened before on the same topic. That's why our ten is up.
We hear you, Commissioner, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, which is why over the past two years, you've seen a ramp down of those services and the various tasks. You have that commitment from, from, from staff to hire more and continue to bring various services throughout the entire city, more in-house, and that's what we're doing. But absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Manager. Next item is Business Tax Receipts, Dean's Gold, Community Development Director.
Move to approve.
Do I have a, do I have a motion to move to approve?
He moved it.
Do we have a, set, okay, Commissioner Chernoff is moving it. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Introduce City Attorney.
Agenda Item 12.1, I'm sorry, Agenda Item 12, Business Tax Receipts, Agenda Item 12.1, excuse me, request from Dean's Gold to renew the extension of ours' business tax receipt. Sponsored Community Development Directors, Afir Ahmed.
Good morning, for the record, Mitchell Austin.
Read that one.
Can you speak up?
Good evening, for the record, Mitchell Austin, our Community Development Assistant Director. This item is for the annual extension of the business tax receipt for Dean's Gold. They have two items which come before you, that's an extension of hours from 2:00 to 4:00 a.m. and from 4:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. And the Police Department has provided in your packet a list of all of the incidences that have occurred over the past year. They have no, uh, they provided no additional comments or recommendations regarding the extension of premises and, uh, or extension of hours for the premise, and, uh, City Staff recommends, uh, approval.
Thank you, Mitchell. Uh, Mayor, additionally, um, and, and I'd like for Deputy Chief Nichols to, to come up and talk with regards to um, any police concerns, uh, over the past year. But one of the things that we also wanted to acknowledge is, um, I have reached out to, uh, to the managing partner, um, or, or the owner, uh, of Dean's Gold and, and then, um, through the Police Department, they have been working to increase the various cameras throughout the property, um, for, for any issues that, that may have and have been, uh, coming up. And they have been working with our Police Department and we are appreciative that they've been open to that kind of partnership, um, above and beyond what they've done in the past. Um, but, um, DC, can you kind of go through, um, any major concerns, um, over the past year with regards to, um, Dean's Gold?
Wait one second. Is there nobody here from Dean's Gold?
Nope. I, I don't believe so, sir.
Thank you.
Go, go ahead, um, sir.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Commission, Manager. Uh, the Police Department doesn't have any objection to, uh, declining the license extension for hours. There were 21 incidents last year. Uh, most of them were an unwanted guest, burglary to a vehicle, battery calls and a customer dispute over a phone. But other than that, it's pretty much been status quo there and we don't have an issue with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have, um, any discussion on the desk on this matter? Seeing none, do I have a motion to-
To approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes you down. Next item. Oh, I'm gonna be very quick on this. Our Centennial is coming up. I, um, we have to, I believe that we should commit, um, commit a, um, create a board, um, specifically for that. It's gonna be a, a year, a year-round event. They, they do this in every cities. I, I haven't seen North Miami doing theirs and Ciara is very involved in doing videos with each Commissioner, you know, inviting the public to get involved, uh, the different aspects. But I know this is, you know, is gonna be like something that's gonna be, that I don't think just the one particular board, even though you guys do a great job. I, I think-
Oh, no, 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 it shouldn't be our board. This should be your-
Yeah, so I think that each one of us should be able to point one person to a, a Centennial Board. They'll come up with all these ideas. Um, they can be a lot more new ones and I think it's something we, uh, we're behind the eight ball a little bit because a lot of stuff has to be contracted out way beforehand because it's gonna be a, oh, over a year span. This is, only happens once every hundred years and it only happens once for the first hundred years. So, um, we have a lot of history.
Once in our lifetime.
Once in our lifetime.
Great idea.
So I, I just want us to, you know, give direction to, um, the City Managers, for us to create this board and for us to come, uh, at least, uh, give the parameters. I don't know if you're working with the City Clerk and, and soliciting, uh, letting people know that we're gonna be making this election and we can have a decision on the board members no later than, um, I would say, uh-
Next, Commissioner.
Next, next Commissioner.
So, so one member, one person per Commissioner?
Yeah.
And are we going to specify whether that person has to have a certain ability to do that?
I, I, I don't wanna limit. I don't wanna, because- Okay, well, I mean, okay, okay. Okay, so, I mean, no, no, it can't be, it has to be a resident, of course. It has to be someone that has some type of, um, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna pigeonhole anybody, but I, I'll leave, I'll, I'll take whatever suggestions. I just know we need it.
If you're gonna finalize the appointments, if you, I'm sorry, the, the creation and the criteria at the next meeting, you don't necessarily have to say that the appointments will be made at your next meeting. You can say, we're gonna do this and these are the criteria and everybody should appoint one and just ask everybody to appoint them. It doesn't, unless you want the right to approve everybody else's appointment.
No, no, this one, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that should be there.
Adopt it at your next meeting and then just ask everybody to make their appointments pursuant to what you adopt as quickly as possible.
So we should have, we should have people who at least have some knowledge in, in, in party-
Well, he's saying, set up your criteria.
Yeah.
Set up your criteria at the next meeting.
And have the legislation ready for our next meeting.
And set the criteria and then, once you adopt that, thereafter, everybody makes their appointment. As soon as they can find somebody to adopt the criteria next meeting.
I know, I know we are, but I wanna be a little, I'm, but to, to Commissioner Smith's point, I think there has to be some type of baseline. I, I agree. I just think we need to get the ball rolling and we need to get Ciara involved because that's gonna be a, a big driver for this or whatever because, you know, our major corridor and what have you. So I'm just letting, I think we need this type of legislation next, at our next commission meeting. And whatever requirements that you guys feel that needs to be added, please add it. I think this would be a ma, this would be coming from staff and add your thoughts to it and then we'll vote on it. But I know we need this. Other, other cities have it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one of, they sent out a page letter, if you read it, of selecting somebody and it's interesting because somebody that may have long-term knowledge of the city and somebody that may have a vision of the city may not be artistic enough to plan what, what we should do about that. And somebody that is very artistic to make our party planner or an event planner may not have the history. So that's why I think we should definitely have the, some kind of criteria, as the attorney said, that who we appoint, because it's going to come very quickly and-
Very quickly.
And there's seven of us, who we appoint has the capabilities and is not a newbie.
Look, other cities have these, uh, I would say, a template that we can utilize. Just bring it, bring it, um, before us and we have to, if we have to make any changes, we'll make any changes. So that's just the direction I wanna give to the manager so we can have that by next commission meeting and to the City Attorney. Uh, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think we're kinda going around it in a different way and it would take longer. I think that we should source for an event, event or, or event slash organizer. The event organizer has consultant, like a board that actually sounds against them. So whoever has a vision or a history of the past or whatever's specific and special to our city, then that, that's, that's how I envision a Centennial Committee being.
So you're saying have, pretty much put, I guess, put a solicitation, get an event pla, an event company and then have the board-
None of us are gonna be, eventually you're gonna need that anyway. So if you have an event planner or an organizer who is going to plan the event, then that person like gives a broad picture and then all the, the advisors on the committee would plug in those essential things that make it a North Miami Beach, like specific.
Is there a budget?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Manager, is there a budget?
That's what I was gonna go to next because I was going to propose that if we are going to make the Centennial an amazing event, we should cancel all other events and just make the Centennial event the event of the year.
No, that's not, ooh, no, we can walk and chew at the same time, Vice Mayor.
Well, no, we, we want, we wanna think-
We can walk and chew. We can walk and chew. We can walk and chew.
We're pretty much inviting all of our neighbors here.
No, we've, 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 we've really limited, I mean, like this, like this month we should have had, um, our loving. We haven't had that, I don't know how long.
Long time.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is before-
You suggested it for next year.
I know, I know, I know, but, but I, but what I'm saying, Mr. Manager, is this, right? I like the idea that the Vice Mayor pointed out, um, that we have to put a solicitation out there for a company or whoever to, to, to be the, the sounding board or to you, to be, to be utilized as, as the, the main, um, point person for the, this advisory board that we're gonna appoint. So how do you envision us doing that? Do you want, you want us to give you direction to put out a solicitation for, for something that's massive and for them to come back with an RFP or an RFQ?
I mean, or if we think that we could do it in-house.
That's what I was gonna say. Can our parks events be called?
Well, it's not, no, it's not even parks. It involves comms, it involves, this is a massive thing and-
I mean, not to give parks extra work, but they are amazing at, at doing-
Exactly.
But if there's no other events the whole year, what are they gonna do anyways?
That's what Vice Mayor was saying. They're so strapped that we could, we can't-
Mr. Manager, do you have a thought? Give us your idea, please.
Sure.
And be brief, please.
So, um, I, I think that ideally, my recommendation, um, for the Centennial, I don't believe it's one day. I believe it's a year-long celebration.
No, it is a year.
And, and my concern with having a vendor organize that is you're asking them to event plan an entire year worth of activity. That's gonna be, in my opinion, a ton of hours. These are typically hourly-based type contracts, whether it's $5 or $150 an hour or anything like that. That type of work is going to be a lot more than, than what we're assuming and, and we're coming off of a conversation where we're talking about no more consultants, which is kind of weird. So my recommendation-
Nobody's their own wedding planner.
My, my recommendation-
Except when we need one.
My, my, my recommendation is we have, um, we, we have, we have staff um, who has done an amazing job in multiple departments in planning, um, taking and leveraging Snowfest, Monster Bash, things that we already do, taking it to an extra level. If we're able to obtain seven, um, residential, um, members from the community that are more experienced and have skills with either branding, event planning, graphic design, so it's also a working group. I would like to see a unique logo brand for our 100-year. And so some of that might be, hey, I'm a graphic designer, I, I live in, in the city. Um, um, I do branding for multiple artists, all that is great. Here are a few different ideas that then they can kind of filter that. We can present that to the community, we can present that to you. And it's all a buildup so that come January 1st, 2026, until December 31st, even if we don't have an event every month, it might be, it might be a quarterly event to celebrate or we're tagging on to an already existing event that we're just ratcheting up, um, um, to the next level to celebrate that 100 years. I think that's the best way to do it.
Well, well, to-
Well, somehow.
Well, look, see, that, well, see-
Just a couple of zeros?
I, I, I know, I, I know, we need two things. I know we do need to set up the criteria for the, for this particular bicentennial board and we also, I, I think we're gonna need some expertise on this. Cause nobody, I mean, look, I can have all ideas I, I, I could have, but my wife was not gonna tell me like, you're planning a wedding. I ain't gonna, I'm not that, that's how it is, you know? Um, I do have ideas, um, and I can chime in, you know, I can attend the board meetings, I can say, hey, this is my thought or whatever. But I need someone to be really focused on this because we have a bunch of other things we gotta worry, worry about.
Absolutely.
And that's why, and that's, but I still, like I said, I think we need a, we need a wedding planner in this case and we, and we need someone that's dedicated from the family-
That's why-
That can, you know-
Mayor, to your point, to your point, I think just like at PNZ and other boards where we say, hey, first, um, first priority in, in selecting a, a board member is that they have this type of background. And I think if, if we say, hey, these are the backgrounds that we would like to see, we have an amazing community that are from lawyers to financial gurus, to marketing gurus, to event planners and that wedding planner. If they are more than willing and we know that we have a willing community to volunteer their time and to help lead such a important celebration of our city, I think that we can get that without having to do an RFP or an RFQ.
All right, so you'll come back with, you'll, you'll come back with the criteria for this particular board?
Sure.
Uh, next commission meeting. And then at that point, we'll give a date certain for us to have this committee set. I think, I think a month will be no more than that. So we should have everything wrapped up by April. At least have the board criteria set up and have, um-
What I would like to recommend is that I give you that criteria. If we're not doing a formal, um, appointment via, via resolution, then come March, um, I, I can give you that recommendation and come March, you can already give a name, um, so that we can already start it.
Yeah, once we, once we vote on the criteria, we can just give the name. We don't have to go through a resolution from, uh, on, yeah, I think I'll be, I think that's perfectly fine.
But we don't have to vote on the, on the names. We'll just vote on, we'll just vote on-
Mr. Attorney, is that okay?
On the criteria, but we don't have to vote on the committee.
Um, I'm back to what the mayor said before. We're saying the same thing using different orders.
Okay.
At the next meeting, you need to approve criteria.
Yeah.
And whether we do that by having it as a reso or whether we do that just as a, not every single thing has to be a reso just as you're acting, but sometimes it's just easy to do that and then you have something to look at. So either way, what matters is the criteria. You have to have an appointment. You can decide the criteria in that meeting and I'll get what the manager figure out.
But do we have to vote on the appointment?
Once, once the- Once the, once we vote on the criteria.
But-
Whether we formalize it in a reso or just a policy or a proposal, it's really the same.
All right.
Okay, so thinking ahead, because we're almost finished with this subject, I'd like to know what the budget is. Because I can't imagine if we're going to try to celebrate at every occasion, the best way to celebrate is giveaways. So they have something, uh, you know, whether it's Easter and every little rabbit has 100 on it, on his name, whether it's football season and every jersey has 100. So I need to know, A, the budget and B, we have to also remember when we plan things, what month are they gonna be planned on because of the, I know for the seniors, we have to always look at the weather.
Also, al, also the consideration, when you do come up with that plan, come up with this, because I know there's gonna be, there'll be a lot of companies that love to sponsor some, these types of events to make sure that we have a deck. But just to come up with a financial plan of what this would consist of, you can come up with a, with a rough draft by, by our-
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, go ahead, City Attorney. Sorry, go ahead.
I apologize. This is not so much legal advice. I'm limited to that. But a lot of cities I've worked with, when they have something like this, you know, you're talking about it as if it's a dead loss. But like cities that have, you know, art festivals, fairs or things like that, you can make some money by having an opportunity for, uh, people, you know, food trucks and, and art sales and things like that. You can have vendors and sponsors, as you said, and you can not necessarily have to fund this mostly or even, you know, primarily through city general funds because you're giving something, I mean, you know, charging the food truck something to come out and have this audience. You charge people that wanna sell, you know, jewelry or something and then you look for, as you said, their sponsors.
No, there's a lot of, like, Jackson is a big, um, um, employer in our city. We have a large Jewish school in our, in our city. I can see them being involved in something this historic. So coming up with a financial plan, I think that, um, that's something that you can come up with. Just a rough draft for us, so we know what we-
Just some kind of guide.
We can-
It's gotta be written in stone.
We, we can provide the, the sponsorship deck. Um, the budget would be determined based on how many events, what is it that we're gonna do? Are we piggybacking off of what we already do on a yearly basis? That will be part of the budget process, um, that we'll do. The good thing about our Centennial is that it covers two fiscal years.
Yeah.
Um, because our, I think our Founder's Day is in December of 2026.
Yeah.
So that's already fiscal year, exactly. I'm thinking, me personally, I would make Snowfest five times bigger than what we've done, right?
Ariana Grande, the whole night, right?
The founder, everything. But we don't, we don't need to have, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna spend X amount of dollars within 30 days. I think the, the whole point of this group is to identify those opportunities to, to maximize those efforts over two fiscal years.
Yeah. So, uh, you have a direction, Manager. I mean, like, you'll, you'll come back to us next commission. We don't need to vote on it. Next item is trolleys.
Wait, 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 and one, one more thing.
Sorry, sorry, Commissioner.
What staff person is gonna be assigned to the committee?
Well, that's up to the ma, he knows what we want.
We'll have staff from Communications, Parks, um, and Police.
And Finance.
You mean her daughter Lily?
No.
No, the, the entire machine. Uh, Commissioner- That's what, that's what I'm saying. I want the whole machine. Yeah, I want Amelia the whole night. Uh, um, so, Commissioner Smith, um, trolley.
Okay, so it was brought to my attention that the trolley was stopping on Miami Gardens, in Miami Gardens or on Miami and Gardens Drive, west of Sixth Avenue. So, and also it was brought to my attention that when it goes out of the city, the liability to the city is far greater in the fact that it wouldn't be our North Miami Beach Police Officer if there was an accident. It would be the municipality the accident happened in. So I am never going to give up on the fact that we only own five trolleys, but we rent a six trolley and we use that trolley to pick up in the county, to stop in the county, to go to Aventura and stop two or three places in Aventura. Now, if you call Miami Shores, their trolley is not going to North Miami to pick up people and take them to Miami Shores Swimming Pool. North Miami is not picking up people and taking it to, uh, Aventura. We're the only municipality that our tax dollars, North Miami Beach, mine, cause I happen to live here, my tax dollars is paying for transportation from the county to a municipality that's not our city. People have said, but your residents are going to Aventura and your residents getting off the bus. I understand that, but Miami Shores residents are going to the Art Museum in North Miami, but Miami Shores is not providing them the transportation. North Miami residents are going to the pool in Miami Shores, but North Miami is not providing transportation. So I again make the motion that, and hope to get a second, that we eliminate that trolley or they get the money from the county and the money from Aventura to pay for the trolley. Or at least help pay for the trolley because why? Because we're spending that kind of money renting a bus that goes out of our city to out of our city. So I make that motion that we-
Second. Okay.
Yeah, we both seconded it.
So, discussion?
We made it, Mr.-
Yeah. All right, so can I, may I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, to the manager, the contract is up for renewal in April?
Yeah.
Okay, so have you spoken to or are you going to be speaking to, um, ProCal?
Yes, ma'am. We have a meeting scheduled. I believe it's either, it's not tomorrow, so it's next Wednesday.
For who? To who, speak to who? ProCal?
The owner, the owner.
Okay, so I, I have set it up here and I've said it, that I always thought that Aventura Mall should pay for something.
But they don't.
And they won't. They don't and they won't. So, um, you know, but I also remember that, including myself, I voted against it. We were supposed to have a, a trolley study and I, we all, I think it passed, I think we voted- We were supposed to have a trolley study and I, we all, I think it passed, I think we voted all against it. So, I mean, so it's like we, we, we don't do the trolley study, but then we don't know what, we don't know how many people are writing it because we don't do the trolley study. Because, because if one resident has gone on it one time and only, for three hours and only saw two people on it, is not a scientific study.
No, it's not.
You know, so, I mean, maybe just coincidentally that day and maybe not, maybe that, maybe it is always like that. But without the study, which I again voted against, but without the study, we, we really don't know the numbers. We don't know how many people are writing it, maybe, maybe we, maybe a hundred people are writing it, uh, into all five of them in a year. You know, maybe we, we don't need the trolley. You know, but without, we, we.
I, I, to your point, I don't wanna make an anecdotal, because I know we have certain residents that feel they know pretty much everything. And I'm not saying that their passion is not warranted, but at the same time, like, you know, this is an anecdotal approach. We're, we're gonna have a discussion on this, or like the manager can have a discussion on this, on the contract coming up relatively soon. So to do it because, you know, like this, I don't think would be proper. Uh, I know the ridership is pretty substantial, um, I know our public works. Sam, can you, because sometimes people, and they'll probably say that what you're saying is untrue because they don't see it with their own eyes, but just because I don't see an atom doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but please.
Thank you, Mayor, just to clarify, the commission never voted against the traffic trolley stops and the study. They just tabled it, the item was tabled twice.
Yeah, we did.
Twice, but it has not been rejected.
Regardless whether we voted against it or we tabled it, we, it, it never happened.
Yes.
If you want to be brought up with the next.
But we do need, we do need numbers, if it's not brought up by the vendor, uh, we need, we need a, a unbiased, uh, type of analysis before we do something this drastic, because like I said before, we, we can't be doing, playing like that.
Okay, so.
Yeah, but don't we have a staff person at that surgery?
No, no, but I'm saying like we should do this.
We have a full-time staff person.
No, no, but I'm saying like we need those numbers, I mean, those discussions, the manager's gonna have those discussions.
So do we have a full-time staff person that can do this?
We do have a trolley coordinator, I believe. Now, we have a trolley coordinator and she does collect information.
No, but she.
I think that the information should be cross-checked with an independent person who is doing the study. Now, I asked the manager and the manager said that he's going to find, try to find funds elsewhere to, to pay for the study, which is $107,000, and we have tabled it since December.
But can I just say a few things? Number one is, when you find money from elsewhere, it's not being used for elsewhere, so it's still being taken from something.
Elsewhere as in like, there's a willingness to sponsor it by any of the vendors where we get to pick the independent study.
But you know, if I, if I could say, I don't walk every day, but I walk, I try to walk consistently, the same walk, and I see the trolley all the time, that I have only one time seen four people. I either see no one, one, or two, one time I saw four. So I'm not saying we should take it away from the public. I'm gonna bring this up because we're paying with our tax dollars.
To leave.
Out of our city to out of our city, and that I wanna stop.
But I also want, look, if you, you bring up North Miami, North Miami goes into, North Miami's trolley goes into, I know it's, it's a short, it's a short turn into, but it goes into that Publix, which is technically our, our neck of the woods, which is, uh, for Biscayne, you know, you know that, right? I know, they have Publixes in their area, but they still bring them, it's, it's spot, it's spot, uh, type of jurisdiction, but.
Because they go back into North Miami, they go from North Miami into the county, into North Miami Beach, into the county, it goes back into North Miami, that's not a straight strip. That, that might be in North Miami Beach, but then the next stop is the North Miami, that they'd have to stop anyway. Because, because F I U and that whole complex is North Miami, the school's North Miami, Costco is North Miami, so.
And the Home Goods and the Home Things is N M B.
Yeah, but North Miami, the Costco and that is not a fair thing because North Miami Beach is on the other side of where Costco is.
But you have to go around.
The trolley would have to go past there.
You have to go around though, it's not, I mean, they haven't opened up the roadway where it's supposed to be, but.
But, but this is, that's a totally different thing. This starts out of the city, it ends out of the city to the, the city that brags, we have the least amount of taxes in Dade County, they, they're getting the benefit and we have the, one of the highest taxes and we're paying for it. Could we get real, could we take care of our public tax dollars, please?
I wanted to chime in too. You know, it's very interesting how, you know, services are cut, right? We're looking at it from the federal side to the state side, how all the trickle-down of services to people are being cut, and it's an interesting conversation that we're having to cut services. None of us take public transportation. Um, you know, we're, we're not in that bracket where we ha, oh, we don't choose to, some people do it just because they wanna go green and, and, and save energy and so forth. But I think it's unfair to the ridership to cut a service, especially in, in the time that we're in currently. Yeah, for us sitting up here, we're so far removed from transportation, from, from public transportation in general. But when you put yourself at the level of the public, which oftentimes we don't do, we, because we can't empathize with that group.
Well, I am, I, I didn't have transportation for a long time.
The reality is, right now, with the, with the changes in Better Bus Network and the holistic approach to transportation, we're looking at it from a pigeonhole because we technically want those funds to be reallocated to another division of the city, be it streets, so forth, which I do agree that we need to find ways to increase the level of service to the, to the improvement of our streets. However, I don't think we have to bifurcate it to the point where services are being cut.
Robin Peter.
And so, to your point, I understand, we all want to see funds reallocated in areas where there may be a need, but we're really cutting our residents without really knowing what's happening there from a data perspective.
But Commissioner Jean, that is not in our city. I wanna give our residents, why don't we?
It's a holistic approach, no, who?
It's not in our city.
North Miami Beach.
And it's going to Aventura, the wealthiest city?
North Miami Beach is a city that's in the center.
Lowest taxes.
It's a mall.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Aventura is just a big, I mean, I'm not knocking Aventura, but I'm just.
It doesn't matter, that's, they have the lowest taxes. I'm, I understand what you're saying with the transportation, I would love a study because for what we pay per ride, we might think it's better to give a, what do they call that?
A voucher?
A voucher for them to take a cab, and it's gonna be cheaper out of our taxes, because that's how many people ride. But if they, listen, I agree that if we need more, that we should have more, maybe more freebies, maybe more whatever. I, I agree, I'm not even talking about the five we own. I'm talking about renting one to go out of the city, to go out of the city, does not make sense to your tax dol.
But, but part of your motion was to get the money from the city, other cities.
Or, but the, the other cities won't do it, nobody's, nobody has gotten them to do it, so.
Aventura is a, is a private business, right? So it's a priv, it would be a, a, a public-private partnership, right? So that's.
No, they stop at Fresh Market.
Likely to, to happen, we're looking for government funding to support a transportation issue. I don't, I wouldn't see a private entity providing you funds to service a public need.
I happen to tell you that, um, I've spoken to a couple of the commissioners in Aventura and they won't do it, why should they? So.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be their decision, it'll be the mall.
It's the mall.
It'll be sulfur making.
Well, she's just saying now, that's why should a private.
No, she's saying that that would, that type of like analysis doesn't make any sense, I'm a business owner, why would I then? I don't control that all these residents are coming to me, why would I then invest the money in that capacity? You can't, to say that the mall would be, would jump in to do that, doesn't make any sense.
No, but they stop at Fresh Market, they stop along the way, I've seen them twice. This is the thing, I, I, I agree with you, here's my, the five, the five should have a study without, but if we continue outside the city, there's so many other things, Commissioner Jean, that are very unfortunate, that some people just don't get the benefit of, that don't live in our city, that I would love to support too. I am so honored that the man for the autism children came before us. There's so many programs that we as, as residents would love to support, but we need to support with our tax dollars, our community.
And economic development is relative to all that we're talking about, so it's, it's not pigeonholing the, I think you're focused a lot on transportation, for some reason, I'm not sure, but we look at the holistic approach to a resident that lives in the city of North Miami Beach. We're looking at a holistic approach.
Okay, let me make it sure why I'm doing this, because they are going from outside our city to outside our city on a rental that we're paying for because we don't own the bus.
May I?
That's why I'm adamant about it.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I mean, Mr. Manager, you had said that you were looking into getting advertisements for the trolley. What, what's the verdict on that?
Um, the, the vendor is able to activate that, we have a meeting on Wednesday.
So what, can we, so can we then table this issue so he can have this, because it's coming up, it's coming up.
Well, I mean, what, what Phil has brought up is very important, because I'm worried about the liability, okay, more than anything.
Well, right now, no, 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 I wanna, I wanna.
Power trolley outside of the county.
No, no, but I wanna clarify that liability, that.
And wait, one more, one more thing, so apart from the liability, there is also another issue about the last mile. Now, from the border of where North Miami Beach is to Aventura is not a mile. I think it's, I believe it's a little bit more than a mile to Aventura Mall. So if we're looking to answer the question of the last mile, it should be the last mile where the county buses drop them off and, or, you know, if they choose to go green, then they can take a mile into the, into the city and done. So the issue is that there is like, it's like not the last mile, it's the last three miles, it's the last five miles, and it never ends. So with the liability and the concept of the C I T T money, which is supposed to be the last mile, we should stick to that intention so that we can follow through with it in the most frugal way possible.
Look, from Houston's on the Aventura Mall, I think it's like about a mile, me being quite frank, and that's the last, that's how far it is. So Houston's, is it Houston's or is it P F?
Houston's is ours.
It's P F Chang's, so it's from P F Chang's.
P F Chang's is not ours.
P F Chang's is not.
Yes, it is.
But Houston's is.
Houston's is, but P F Chang's.
So, so from Houston on to the mall.
Complex is ours.
Marina Falls, okay, okay, so, uh, Mr. Manager, I, because I know there's a motion in a second, I know.
So, so wait, so I think Commissioner Chernoff misunderstood what he made a motion on.
No, 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 unless.
I mean, what he seconded on.
I seconded on Phyllis.
Seconded, we seconded on Phyllis actually bringing this to.
But you said, you said you thought it was something else that you were saying.
No, what I'm.
There was two parts to it.
Well, look, I'm saying like, I, I'm asking the proposer of the, of the motion.
I wanna hear about the liability.
Oh, though, well, look, unless.
I'll move the second to.
Unless we have a.
I wanna hear about.
Unless we have a, like, a M O U, like, if that trolley gets an accident off of, like, Biscayne or certain aspects of it, it's gonna be F H P in some cases, so like, at the end of the day, you're saying it's gonna be Avant, like, Aventura Police, we don't necessar. Well, I'm, I'm just saying like, there's, the liability approach has to be a little, little bit more nuanced to say that.
Insurance, that's not.
No, but.
Whoever the reporting, um, for a crash doesn't.
No, she was saying like, it wouldn't be our police, like, that.
Saying there's liability because it's out of the city, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure what they mean by that.
But that being said, we have a motion in a second, is there, is, can the, um, the person bringing the motion allow the manager to have the meeting with the vendor so he can come back to us?
Yeah, I would like.
Meeting's done until April, we're gonna be paying.
No, no, no.
Next week. Okay, so next week you're meeting with them to discuss what?
Um.
Because it's coming up, it's about the.
No, but then we don't meet again till March, go ahead.
Right, we'll be discussing the advertisement, um, on, on the trolleys and, and what that can look like and how much that can generate. Um, and we're also discussing any potential, um, agreement changes or anything that would come back to the commission for an extension.
Also the study, please, if you're gonna talk about the study.
So can you allow him to make that, can you, would you be able to withdraw your, your motion so he, you can allow the manager to have this discussion?
The city clerk, I'm withdrawing my motion and asking you to put the trolley discussion on the next agenda.
I thought it was always gonna be there, but.
It is.
So, so she pulls it, next item is Commissioner Sue, Charter Review.
Yes.
I mean, Vice Mayor Sue, sorry.
It's okay.
Vice man.
I'm sorry, public, you're paying for something outside of our city, I can't help it, one more month.
No, she had, she had a walk.
Well, okay, so, um, so I'm adding this because like I think the charter review is coming up and we have to.
State statue or something.
Right, it's every 10 years, right? So, um, there's a lot of outdated issues and a lot of ambiguity in the current charter. So when we are counting the number of days a person has been missing, you know, it's like, it's not clear from what day to what day are we gonna, you know, change that and alter that. Now, I think that we should also form a committee, um, but I don't, how is a charter amendment usually, how does that usually take place?
How do we set up, so, we, we're gonna have to do this.
Yeah, what is, what is the normal practice that's been happening in the city?
Each commissioner is going to appoint a resident to serve on the charter board. I believe one of our commissioners currently served before. I'm waiting for the okay with, um, the Elections Department, because we have to request for a special election.
So, so the direction I'm hearing is that we, can we, just like how I'm making the, the centennial, can we have the, the parameters for the next commission meeting?
There is already a code.
Then let's, can we have that ready for, so we can start appointing people next, next mission?
When is it up?
Wait, can we accelerate that a little bit so that we could, next meeting we are gonna have it to approve?
No, we already have, we already have.
We have a code provision, it says that it does call for a resolution, but the parameters of it are pretty clear.
Okay, so after the resolution.
All right.
Things that you have to do, that you have to set by resolution, the quote duties, but it's very clear that whatever the committee does is a recommendation to you.
First of all.
The commission has the final say, please remember, please remember that nothing about having that charter review committee interferes with the right of any citizen to pursue a charter amendment under our local and county and state law. It is a little, because of the Dade County Home Rule Charter provision that's in the state constitution, there has been some litigation that I've been involved in in the past, where some people say, no, we have to follow the county procedure because it's, it's governed by home rule, and some people say, no, no, the state provision applies, but that process whereby citizens can bring an amendment if they do it in a proper way, that exists, and that's not trammelled in any way by the fact that we have this committee. We set up the committee, I've done four or five of these charter reviews for different, and rewritten two or three charters, like, uh, Opalaka and Al Pretau, it's a, a pretty accepted process.
So, so.
We'll bring a reso.
So you bring the reso next.
We'll bring a reso.
Yeah, the attorney, just for clarification though, um, and, and maybe I just misheard, the intent of the charter is to have recommendations on the ballot for the November 26 election? Not a special meeting or not, not a special election in '25?
No, no, it's 2026, we're always doing 2026.
Your time, the clerk has been working with me on it and we're, we're moving forward on it, we'll, we'll bring a reso.
Manager, we have your item, which is a.
Wait a minute, I have a question.
Okay.
City, um, clerk, Madam Clerk, um, if it was closer to election time and we had the charter review, it would not require a special election, am I correct? It could be put on the regular election.
That's what we're doing, that's what we're gonna do. It'll be during the general election, that's correct.
She just said it would require a special election, so I'm trying to clarify.
Only if we did it sooner, but that's not the contemplation, and we'll clarify that in the resolution.
Okay, I, I, I don't wanna spend the $70,000.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The second thing I wanna say about the charter review, because I've been through one, and you don't, and I'm cautioning you, Vice Mayor, because of what your statement was, how many things could be wrong in there. If you do more than eight or 10 things, that is not a good idea because the public doesn't read through them.
No, no, no.
That's right, they don't read through them, they just do it or ignore it or what have you. So we really have to focus on what are the important things to change. And I think that once he brings us the guidelines and we sit with.
We start appointing.
Whoever you get from the charter review, again, are you saying, I don't remember, the guidelines give you the requirements of who should be sitting on there?
No, but it's one appointment by each commissioner.
That's it.
But we could try in the resolution, because it says it's to be adopted and the duties are fixed in the resolution. Uh, and let me just say that while you're eminently correct that you can't have too many items and not lose people's attention, but you, you can carve out the big items for a separate vote, and then you can have like a casual house cleaning that cleans up a bunch of stuff. It might go down, but it, those are typically, unless you're unethically slipping some big thing in there, those are typically pretty non-controversial.
Like a consent agenda, you're trying to get a few things in the.
Yeah, if you're just cleaning stuff up and you're not, you know, trying to hide something, most people will vote for modernizing language.
Let me ask you your experience, if I could, City Attorney, do you feel that we should put, as we are going to do with our other committee we're creating for the. for the people to be historic or at least have some history? If they're going to be on the, um, committee to plan for the hundred? Do you think we should have some guidelines to who is, should be on there? Like an attorney or like somebody cares about the city or do you think?
You can have some guidelines if you want. Just keep in mind, to use the mayor's analogy of a wedding planner, I do that. And I've done that, so I just need to be, I, I know how to walk them through it. And, and there, there is somebody that, you know, leads it. The clerk has a role, but the attorney, you know, that's something I would undertake. It's a project that we undertake. We meet with everybody. We, uh, ask them, I mean, there's a protocol for it that I've done in, you know, in North Bay Village and in Doral and, and in, uh, El Portao and Opa-locka. Sometimes, I mean, we don't need to rewrite our whole charter. But commissioners are certainly welcome to offer suggestions to the committee, even though it's coming back to you.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's just, it's a simple, we have a lot of time. It's an orderly process. You know, there's a few hot button issues that everybody wants to look at. Are there any change in the way you conduct your elections? Um, I've had one very pointed suggestion from a member of your august body who thinks that we are not well-served by having our elections in November with a presidential election. And there are certainly pros and cons to that. I mean, you get bigger turnout if you do it in November of a presidential year or a gubernatorial election, if you have an election every two years. But are they more discerning voters? Do people pay more attention to local issues if you have your election in May? I don't know that there's an answer one way or another. That's, depends on what you want to do. But, and ultimately you will make that decision.
When they change it on the charter, they change it. Change it on the charter with the understanding that, P, there were a lot of snow burns and they're not here in May. So there are a lot of.
All good reasons, Commissioner.
It's cheaper also.
Ultimately, this dais will make that decision regardless of the, the recommendation. But by opening it up to seven people, you don't particularly need people who have special expertise to do that. I try not to be immodest, but I got that. So the thing is, you want people who, number one, well, I guess number one is live in the city. But number two, care about the city. And number three, have some experience of ups and downs through the city. And if they bring that, we'll bring you a product that you can dig your teeth into and say yay.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sorry. And maybe I'm, I'm making this up, but was, maybe Commissioner Smith, you remember, wasn't there on the charter review committee, weren't there some alternate members as well? There were alternate members and the criteria the, the attorney just said, which were three basic things, is what I feel should be part of the selection. And if, when you bring that back, if you would put those three things in.
I would discourage alternates only for this reason. You have people, by and large, they serve. If somebody has to be replaced, that's different. Okay, because this can be a lengthy process. It could go on for some months because you have a big charter. But if somebody needs to be replaced, okay. But you don't want to have a constantly shifting cast of who's there and who has a voice, you know? Because to the extent they vote on something, oh, well, the regular member missed it. The alternate has a different point of view. Oh, but then the next meeting, the regular member's back and says, oh, I don't like what the alternates voted. So just, just pick them. And if you, you know, somebody needs to be replaced, the best thing is for the person, and not even, the best thing, honestly, you don't want to embarrass somebody who was busy and men, maybe they have a family member. The commissioner who appointed them can just go to them and say, hey, you, you haven't been able to have the time. How about stepping out so we can appoint the?
Mr. Manager, thank you for that point. Mr. Manager, you heard, uh, heard a direction, your commu-, City Manager report. Do you need anything specifically or it's already all in there?
It's all in there, sir.
All right, City Attorney report, nothing.
Wait a second, you skipped 16.234.
That's the City, that's the City Manager report. That's, it's all in there.
Can you devote one for the record, though?
Which one?
City Manager report. No, I mean, I'd like people to know of the updates of, you know, the Miami Gardens claims, you know, the.
Well, no, 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 no.
Move to adjourn.
No, 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 no. Vice Ma-, Vice Mayor brings up a point, right? Um, just if you can be, um, brief in regards to two issues. She mentioned the Miami Gardens claim, uh, as well as a give a Washington Park update.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just give, uh, give a brief report on just those two items?
Um, sure, all the details are already in the backup with regards to the Washington, um, I'm sorry, to the Miami Gardens claim settlement. Um, as of January 31st, excuse me. Um, again, uh, 16,439, uh, notice packets had been mailed previously. Um, of that, um, they have received, as of January 29th, uh, 2025, 2,672 forms, um, in, um, in. There is a, from time to time, they will email us a resident who says they're a part of the, um, the class, although it's not in the list that we've provided, we verify. And often, so far, all of those have been, no, they're not our customer, they're our county customer.
Washington Park.
Um, Washington.
I don't know how much money was, has been claimed already. Did you say 16,000 or 40?
No, 16,000 notices have gone on. I don't believe that any funds have been distributed as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
Washington Park?
Washington Park, um, we, um, I have Aurelio, um, our CIP Director. He can give a brief.
Brief.
Brief update of where the project stands.
I'll be brief.
Yeah, that's good.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Commission. Um, I'll start. The NTP was issued on December 27th, '24. The pre-construction meeting was held. The contractor initiating mobilization activities in December, completing the construction of the staging area. The pipe material has been purchased and delivered to the construction site. The right-of-way permit was approved and issued. The contractor is currently working on the trenching and installation of the fourth main, and the project is on schedule.
Thank you. Brief? Brief. Uh, City Commission reports, final words?
Wait, can I, also, could I have the ARPA fund update as well?
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor didn't hear what you said.
ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act update.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Mayor Commission.
Good evening.
The ARPA update is essentially a follow-up to the December 17 resolution that was approved by you all, allowing the manager to, um, do what was necessary to obligate the funds, um, by the December 31 deadline. And so the attachment lists all of the, uh, final obligations that we've submitted to the Treasury.
All right. Sorry, Vice.
Are there any issues with the ARPA funds?
Um, to my knowledge, we are still working with the Treasury as part of the submission process, and we don't have any issues to report at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smo.
I'm sorry if I missed it. Did, was it said when we're actually going to break grounds in Washington Park?
They're already working on trenching, that's all.
What?
They're already working on the trenching.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, dirt's been moving.
And I can see they're coming soon on the, on the mesh fence and everything.
Okay, cool. Uh, the only comment I have is, are, please make adjustments on not, and don't lose the money that you have put aside for the traffic calming. I want to use that money for traffic calming, but I want you to make adjustments where it's really.
Pretty good.
If we can only do four instead of doing nine, but those four are imperative, we have to do where.
Absolutely.
Like you have the locations, uh, we're going to vote for.
I also send an email. I also send an email about that, that, that I thought it wasn't. So I don't think that what the homeowners association and what was on there is exactly the same. I think there's some differences to what was agreed on by the homeowners association and Eastern Shores and to, and to what, what is actually on that.
So the temporary speed bumps, um, that were done and, and is asked, part of the, the procedure is to get consensus, uh, from the adjourning, um, or the adjacent. I don't know why I keep seeing adjourning. Adjacent property owner, right?
Once you're ready, please.
The, the adjacent property owner. Um, and so the intent is, hey, this is where we want to put it, even though it's not within engineering standards, but it's temporary, so we're going to put it here. Property owners have said, not in front of my house, no way. There is an increase of noise, um, when you put a, a speed bump because you have the ramp down and then the, the picking up, um, of, of the engine to move forward. Uh, so we've been working with residents to try to make sure that where we install it, we're not being asked to move it within a week of installation.
Mr. Mayor, without getting your wrath, I just want to, I want to say two things. One is, when you read the report that we were going to vote on, you're putting speed bumps, but my understanding is speed bumps cannot be put out in without a study, a professional study from the county. So that was a little discerning. You're, but we had a study, and that's why I'm very leery of these consultants. They wanted to put a speed bump on 171st and 35th Avenue. That is a dead-end streak. When you go down 35th Avenue, if you don't slow down, you're going to the canal. I mean.
I believe the 171st, it was on 171st, not particularly on 35th, um, exactly. Again, the studies have been accomplished. The role of the item that was before you was the design so that as it was approved during, um, budget in which we have over $50 million worth of traffic calming over the next five years, we were only able to allocate about $3 million in this fiscal year. We narrowed it down so that all the projects is equitably distributed throughout the entire city instead of one or two neighborhoods. Um, we were moving that forward as, as our CIP into design so that we can then take that to permitting and construction, hopefully within the next fiscal year. Uh, but we'll bring back and we can change those allocations as you wish, even though that was already.
Because hearing what you said clearly, Ninth Court, which doesn't seem to be as nearly as scary as Tenth Court, is in the same neighborhood to keep the money distributed. But to somebody that has been up twice about his traffic, same thing with Ulieta. And so I think that, I think we still can spread it out through the city just to hit the hot spots first.
And just remember, in certain areas, they're under county jurisdiction, not the city. So parts of Tenth Court, um, may fall under the county, not North Miami Beach.
Make that clear when those suggestions are coming to see how feasible it is.
Absolutely.
Our last final thought, Commissioner, I mean, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. No, so, uh, just a little bit on the speed bump. That's, um, we're trying to, the reason why the engineering company was also hired to do this is also so that we could follow, create a protocol of how to do it so that we could be independent of the county in creating any, any road structures. It was there. Now, um, so with that said, like, that's another story. But my concern is all the studies that we have spent money on already, like the FIU studies, the garbage study, and the rate studies. Like, I just want to see results from that. And if those results are actually, can be rolled out into an action that would work for us.
At the neck, we had a, just to this, to your point, Vice Mayor, we had a, somewhat of like an un-formalized agreement that our conferences are going to be more tailored to certain things that like presentations, so we can move on.